Town council meeting, uh, meeting of January seventeenth, if you could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Madam, madam clerk.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the first item on business is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion?
Uh, Chairman, um, if my colleagues wouldn't mind, I would like to bring, uh, G G, uh, one six.
You said G G one six?
Yes.
Yep. G G one six. All right. I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So we had a motion to, uh, approve consent agenda and move G G one to the end of the meeting. Pull that out of consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the submission of minutes. And this is the town council meeting minutes from December sixth and the executive session minutes from December sixth.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item on the agenda is C one. This is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash nineteen, chapter sixteen to article five for stopping, standing and parking. And this was, uh, for correction of ordinance twenty-three dash thirteen. I do want to note that we did have a withdrawal from the original petitioner, Mrs. Tregula, um, on this ordinance reading.
So receiving file?
No. So, so what the clerk just pointed out is, is we have an agenda item that is requesting a new liquor license, which?
Nope.
No, I'm so sorry.
This is the no parking on King Philip Avenue. Mrs. Tregula, um, was, was given a alternate for Dire Avenue.
So Tony, to answer your question, it is a receipt. There you go. Was that a motion, Tony?
Yes, it is.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, Tim to receive and file. Discussion?
So the new plan is working.
The new plan is working. It's been successful with her son. It's been working perfectly. Uh, we did send her a letter. She is aware and if, if there's a, an issue in the future, she said she would approach the council.
Awesome. That's good news.
Glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Yeah. And that was the recommendation of the police department that worked out. So, yeah.
Thank you, Chief, for the efforts from your department and from you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda.
All right, all right, all right.
Is C two. This is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, chapter seventeen, article two for alcoholic beverage establishment, section seventeen eighty-two. And this is to decrease the number of class B V liquor licenses from thirty-two to thirty-one. This is second reading.
I make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is C three. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one, chapter eleven and eighteen. Chapter eleven for the comprehensive schedule of fees, section one for the comprehensive schedule of fees and chapter eighteen for Parks and Rec, article one. And this is for, um, change in special event fees. First reading.
Motion to approve first reading.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Mister Solicitor, I know that I had talked about this at the last meeting and then we had discussion prior to this.
Right. So this is the last time that you'll need to change these fees by ordinance because within this ordinance change going forward, you'll be able to do them by resolution.
Perfect.
Like similar to many other fees that can change by resolution.
Excellent.
So it's part of the, the fee schedule rather than an ordinance? Thank you.
In the future, after this evening, they'll all be changed by resolution fee schedule. Yes.
Any other discussion?
Uh, just unfortunately, I don't think the director see, uh, and it's not a big issue. It's just asking the two hour block if there is an issue when people reserve, let's say, the pavilion in some of the facilities there, you know, is there an issue? I doubt it. You know, is he here? No.
The assistant director.
Oh, Tim.
Could you come up and answer, please?
Thank you.
We gotta get you a closer seat, Tim.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, did you hear my question?
I did. I did. So we see a, a, quite a variety of rentals that do come in. Some of them are short as one hour. Some of them might be an all day thing, eight, ten hours. We did a, uh, an assessment of all the other communities that we got information from. And the two hour blocks seem pretty common across the board.
Good. So it's a two hour increment, but that doesn't mean they could not do it for four hours if they wish to do a full day, as you pointed out. Okay.
Yeah. For example, today I approved a permit that was for five hours. So it's just doing that math and they're paying by the hour, but having it listed as in two hour increments.
Super. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tim. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D one, and this is Robert McNeil from McNeil Design Collaborative, Inc., doing business as the Northeast Golf Company. And this is for request for dancing and entertainment license, continued from November fifteenth.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So Mister McNeil, you're in front of us asking for a dancing and entertainment license. We had some dialogue, uh, back on November fifteenth and we, this council asked for some, uh, more clarity on what was being proposed.
Right. So I've submitted a twenty twenty-four schedule of events that are happening at the club this year. Uh, and what we're recommending at this time is simply an individual permit for each event that are highlighted in yellow, which is three. So we can individually come in. I, I assume that's how it works. Come in and individually permit, or you can do it ahead of time, each one of these events, uh, prior to them occurring over the course of the season.
So you have the opportunity. This was, we're advertising for a full license here and I'm gonna actually stop here. I'm so glad you're asking for it this way. It was my intention and maybe my colleagues' intentions also to get some more clarity on, on, and had some concerns. And not necessarily for you, but it is a public golf course. Uh, for example, Parks and Rec will be having programs there. Lot of interactions and not necessarily isolated from, uh, youth, such and so forth.
Right.
I think this is an absolutely appropriate way. We also have the opportunity to approve all three right now. We don't need you to come back every single time. Unless this council, uh, chooses otherwise, we can talk about these three events.
Sure.
Get clarity on them and approve them or not approve them, as the case might be. Why don't you go through each one of us, uh, each one of them for us, please?
Uh, well, the July, the June twenty-ninth, Fourth of July signature event is simply a golf tournament, uh, in concert with all the celebration events that are happening over the course of the latter part of June or in through the month of June. So it's gonna be a golf structured event, uh, with some kind of after event, uh, activity after the golf course or after the golf event at the golf course. It's as simple as that. I would envision it about forty to forty-five people that day. And it's a simple event. Uh, all of these are similar, in similar nature, to put it that way. I mean, we may have, and it's likely gonna be an acoustic, someone acoustically playing music as the players are coming through the golf course during this event, just to give it some, some jazz and some excitement as we play the, play the event. It'll be a special format that's built around the Fourth of July here in Bristol. We haven't decided exactly what it's gonna be yet, but that's the general nature of the event. Uh, on the twenty-seventh is Dog Days Classic, which is a twenty-seven hole event. All of the, all of the, the, the entertainment pieces are the same. Uh, so we're not requesting different kinds of things here. I think they're all gonna be a small trio or, or an acoustic player, uh, that are supporting the event. That's a twenty-seven hole event, three nine hole, three nine hole formats. That's in the middle of the summer. And we haven't put this together yet and we'll make, make a connection with the Town Park and Rec. But our company, the Northeast Golf Company, has a charity or, uh, charity arm called NGC Gives. Uh, so we always on all of our properties have a giving event and here it's gonna be BGP Gives, uh, Bristol Golf Park Gives, our charity event. So we're gonna choose a charity that's both local to here in Bristol and some, uh, we usually, we usually support the Special Olympics Rhode Island as well in all of our events. So that'll be that event. And again, similarly, it'll be a, a small music piece for a gathering after the event to give out awards and have a few drinks and have some fun. That's.
That's October twelfth, right?
That's October twelfth. Correct.
Mister, Mister Chairman, I think this is a, a great, uh, a great venue for us to expand the exposure of our Bristol, uh, golf park and, um, and I'd like to make a motion to approve those one day entertainment licenses specifically for June twenty-ninth, the Fourth of July celebration. At July twenty-seventh, the B G P Dog Days Classic and the October twelfth, B G P Charity Challenge.
I second that.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve as stated. Discussion?
Mister Chairman, does that include the three live music nights that are on the entertainment schedule at the very bottom?
No, just those three events.
That's the same. Those are the same nights. That's a typo there.
Uh, one clarity question. You said trio. What is that? I think I know what it means, but can you tell me?
Could be two people playing guitar and someone singing.
Okay. That's a trio. So, yeah. All right.
They could all be singing.
Asked and answered, Your Honor. Thank you, right? Okay. Any other clarity or any questions?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We're excited for twenty-four.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D two. This is Glenda Gonzalez from Oceanside Restaurant LLC, doing business as California Taco, twenty Gooding Avenue. And this is a request for vitroling license. And.
Is Glenda Gonzalez here?
My name is Jose. I represent her. She wasn't able to come in tonight. I'm also a vice president of, uh, California Taco, so I represent, obviously both for them. So.
So, go ahead, please.
Um, yeah, so this will be our location number fourteen. We actually just opened one up in Coventry last month. Uh, we've been looking at Bristol for the last year and a half and, uh, opportunity came up and we decided to come to Bristol. Uh, right now, we currently have, we spoke to Shay Lee down in the water department. We're just waiting for the fire department and the health inspection to, uh, confirm, uh, the inspections for the location.
So this is, normally I would say this to Glenda, but I'll say it to you. This is your thirty-second commercial opportunity. Tell everybody about the new place.
About the.
Tell us about your new place.
Well, right now we have the majority of our locations, you know, in Providence, Johnston, Princeton, kinda in the main area, but we're starting to expand. Uh, Coventry was the first location right now that we kinda expand out of the Providence area. Um, so we are looking to expand Bristol, Newport, and, um, hopefully next year we'll be somewhere in Massachusetts.
It looks like it's a comment. Obviously, it's called California Taco.
Yeah, it's a family-owned business, pretty much. Sisters, aunts, uncles, we all own it.
Outstanding. Yeah, the menu looks delicious. Um, so, uh, my mouth is watering already. Uh, based on those positive recommendations, I'll, uh, make a motion to, um, to approve. And, uh, I think on behalf of the council, I think we welcome you.
No, thank you guys.
And you chose Bristol. So thank you.
I'll second it, Mister, Mister Chairman.
All right. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to approve. Discussion? As Tim said, we actually came here early, so we're all very hungry. Note to the public, if you need something from the council, have, have us come early and then offer, put pictures.
All right, perfect.
I'm joking. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is D three, and this is Barbara Palumbo for St. Elizabeth's Church, five seventy-seven Wood Street. And this is a request for bingo license for Friday, January twenty-sixth from five thirty to nine P M.
Based on the recommendations, I make a motion that we approve it.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E one. This is Sherry Scott, Scott from Beehive Cafe, ten Franklin Street, and this is a request to relinquish the class B V liquor license.
Well, what would be the appropriate motion here? Accept it?
To accept.
To accept that? Yeah. So I make a motion to approve it.
I'm sorry, second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to accept. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is E two. This is Alessio Castro from the Bristol Sports Club, four seventeen Wood Street. This is a six-month review of the dancing and entertainment license.
Based on the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? So this was back in front of us because there were two noise complaints going back a while, but, uh, the police report that we received showed no issues, um, since that time and the recommendation was to approve. Uh, so we have a motion to, and a second to do so. Any other dialogue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is E three, and we have Jordan Sawyer from Brick Pizza Company, five hundred Wood Street, unit two eleven. And this is also a six-month review of the dancing and entertainment license.
Never heard of this place before. Just kidding, Jordan.
So this was similar fashion, please, yeah. So this was a similar fashion. There was no complaints, but this was a six-month review, as we typically do with new dancing and entertainment licenses. Um, there were no issues. Not that we were surprised, but it's, it's very nice to see.
Based on, based on those positive recommendations, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Any discussion? Jordan, any discussion?
Thank you for allowing me to continue this and, uh, for the opportunity. It's been a great addition to the restaurant.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Thanks. Aye.
Just to say, glad to hear that. There is no issues and as you pointed out, not surprised, you know, well done.
Yeah, it's a good, great restaurant.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan.
The next item on the agenda is E four, and this is Alicia Saldana from Colley, thirty-four Gooding Avenue. And this is a request for, I mean, and this is also a six-month review of the dancing and entertainment license.
Uh, based on the positive recommendations, uh, again, no complaints, um, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, one moment. Alicia, I didn't know that you were here. So, okay. So no issues, so please, you, so, so just as with, uh, Jordan, there were no issues, which is exactly what we were looking for. So thank you for that. I guess we were all not surprised either, but it's our normal protocol to go this direction. So thank you for doing that and thank you for no issues.
You're gonna give it three minutes?
Keep up the good work.
I mean, a thirty-second commercial?
You can have another one. Did you want another? You can have a twenty-second commercial. So. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is junk and secondhand license renewals for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Since there were no objections from anyone, uh, and good recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F one, and this is Joseph B. George, twenty-seven Surf Drive. And this is a request for abandonment of the portion of Surf Drive right of way. And this is, um, I think Mrs. George is here, Julia. And this is also called for public hearing.
This is a call for a public hearing in, okay, if, if so, okay. Mrs. George?
Yeah, my husband hurt his back shoveling yesterday. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Why? No, no apologies necessary. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Judy George of twenty-seven Surf Drive, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Thank you. You're more than welcome to adjust the mic. It's set at Jordan height right now. So, yes, yeah, exactly. So tell us why you are, tell us why you're in front of the council.
So we've, we've purchased a lot. Um, unbeknownst to us, it had a lot of man-made wetlands and we were kind of pushed towards the front of the street. And the way that we were made to build due to C R M C, not you guys, you were great. Um, we don't have real access to the backyard and, except for through, uh, like a very windy stairwell. So any lawn mowers, anything that goes to fix like the air conditioning, anything, we go through that side, that abandoned lot, and we have maintained it since we've been building, since we built. But we've been waiting and now the lot next to us looks like it might sell and we're nervous that we we're trying to be proactive because we've been maintaining it. We really need that access to get, think, to get back there even for, we can't bring back kayaks, anything because they can't go down the stairwell. Even our neighbor comes through our, that way, because he doesn't really have much access through his backyard as well. So we were thinking, instead of asking for the whole lot, because we've been maintaining it, we would just ask for half and divide it between our property and the neighbor's property.
Thank you. Thank you. Currently you have a, um, permit to, or license to maintain, correct?
Yes.
When does that license to maintain expire?
So.
Approximately? Do you know?
We're not aware of any of that.
Yeah, there's, um, there are presently no time of when, when you granted that, when there's no time.
It's on the current owner until it changes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay. Counsel?
I'm just curious on, since you have the license to maintain, why do you feel that you need to make a change to that?
So we have, we had a discussion with a couple people about this before we came to this decision. If it was to ever sell or if you were to ever abandon it, we just don't wanna lose that half. I mean, we don't need the whole thing. So we're thinking, we're being proactive now. We'll just go for it at this point because the land has been there for like twenty years. We've been maintaining it since, I think, two thousand and sixteen?
Sixteen.
Yeah, somewhere around there. So it's, if we had half of it, we would know, we would feel a little bit more security in knowing that we won't have, lose this access, basically.
Is it, is, um, from Mike, is like a right of way granted to them? Something that is an option? I'm just trying to think of other ways.
We did ask about that, too. We did say that, okay, if they don't wanna abandon it now, we would like to have something put in place that says if they, if and when it ever does happen, that we would get the half and the other neighbor gets the other half. Because that, we're okay with that, too. We just don't wanna.
So the, the difference is this, a, a right of way would be permanent as opposed to a license, which is not permanent. And abandonment would be giving up title. So the right of way, the town would continue to own, but it would be subject to a forever right of way over the town's property.
I think that's a safer way to go. Am I correct?
I, it's really, it's really up to you. I, I believe the planning board has given you, uh, you, this is not a public hearing. I wanna make it very clear. Um, I don't even know if you're gonna set the public hearing, but the planning board has given you its opinion not to abandon. So another option would be a right of way. And if that's something that the council would rather consider, I could work, um, through the administrator's office to see if that's something we could put together. You would have to approve that, obviously.
What does that mean by right of way?
A, a license is, um, not permanent. A right of way is permanent.
Okay, so.
Right of way would get recorded in the way and evidence records and it would give you a, you wouldn't own.
The end of the street, right of way, that gives everybody access.
No, it would just be to your property.
To your property.
Just to your property.
So you can hear some, some of the questions from my colleague, Mary, and, and the answers. I, I personally concur with the planning board. I do not want to give up town land, but I very much appreciate how you asked and, and I think that this is actually a wonderful way to make sure that you'll have the access that you're looking for while not giving up land that belongs to the people of Bristol. So I think it addresses the concern that you have. And you asked again, is, does that mean people are gonna cut through my yard? No, no, it means that you can and that nothing else could go there and it's, uh, well, it can't block your access to it. Correct, Mister Solicitor?
That would be correct. Yes.
All right.
And, and so what you're saying is if we decide, if that seems to be what our thoughts are now, then you wouldn't have to have a public hearing, is that it?
No, you would not have to have a public hearing on granting a right of way. No.
So the motion would.
Because the town is owning the property. It's sort of, you know, it's akin to when you give utilities easements over, over your property. It's the same thing. You would be giving, whoever lives at that property would always have the right over it.
So, Mike, we could refer this to you to work on behalf of the council to create the right of way to have it come back in front of us for approval?
Yes, but just one thing I have to make clear.
Please.
The, um, legal description, I, I don't wanna get into the weeds here. Your own attorney would have to draft that. And I can certainly work with you through the administrator's office on what the requirements are. But you, you would, but you would have had to go through that same exact process of describing the property by meets and bumps if you went the abandonment route. So either way, you're gonna have to incur that cost.
So, well, we were, they had told us, um, that we would have to get it surveyed.
Yes.
So, so you're not talking about a lawyer, you're just talking about surveyor?
Well, you're, you're totally correct.
Want me to work with you to, to get what I need?
Why don't you contact the administrator's office and we'll set up an appointment. But yes, you will need a survey.
Okay.
So, Mike, help this council with the motion. So we just refer to you to create that right of way?
That is great. And, and.
Thank you. It's a great point. And then it would come back in front of this council.
Eventually it will come back in front of you because only you can grant it.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony as stated. Discussion?
Just very briefly, I, I'm glad that we didn't go the, the path of abandonment. You know, that would not be something I would be in favor, giving up town property.
Mrs. George? Did you have a question?
Wanted to get the information from you that to set up is hard. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I concur, Councilman, et cetera. And we don't know what the future holds. Um, and, and, and Chairman, I agree as well. I think with the rest of my colleagues that I think, uh, giving up that public space would be a detriment to all people in Bristol. So, um, I think we made the right decision here.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We wish your husband well. It was heavy snow.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F two. This is Stephen Messina from Bristol Picture Frame, three seventy-nine High Street. This is a request for a thirty-minute parking block, Monday through Friday, from ten A M. to four P M. In front of the business establishment on the west side of High Street. I do want to note for the record that the Messinas did send me an email, um, earlier this afternoon. They all have COVID and are unable to attend tonight's meeting. So.
I hope they recover.
I would move that we follow the police recommendation anyway, that, um, that we grant the thirty-minute parking space.
Second.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to approve.
That would be to recommend to the solicitor for an ordinance for first reading at the next meeting.
I swear that's what I said.
That's what you said. Okay.
Madam clerk, I thought the sign was stolen.
This, so that, that was there in the nineteen eighties, which did not require a town ordinance. Now for the police office to enforce any type of parking restrictions, it needs to be listed in the ordinance.
Thank you.
So we're gonna correct both of them for the sign up and do the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
And I do have to say, I, I was surprised at how many years as they've been in business. Yeah, the most forty-something years. Yeah, that's amazing. Congratulations.
We have documentation in front of this council. It says Bristol Police Department, Frank Brown, Jr., Chief of Police, dated May ninth, nineteen eighty. That's how long ago this is. Yeah.
Wow.
Kinda neat.
It was interesting then to note that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We write all around, right?
Yeah.
We were so, yeah, that's slow.
Mister Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is F three. This is Charles Eli Dunn from Folklore LLC, doing business as Folklore Provisions, three oh one Hope Street. This is a request for one additional B V liquor license.
Based on the positive recommendations.
Sorry. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
If you could state your names for the record and address for the.
Sure. So my legal name is Charles, but Eli Dunn is what I go by. This is my fiancee, Rachel Almeida.
Rachel Almeida.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm sorry. Just, okay. So we're, um, so I'm coming out of retirement and we're going to, um, open a European-style cafe at three oh one Hope Street. So the former Angelina's Coffee and Roberto's before that. And so we're gonna do a daytime concept, European-style cafe inspired by Rachel's Azorian heritage. So it'll be a fusion of my coastal New England, you know, culinary background and Rachel's Azorian culinary background. Um, so really good espresso, sandwiches, salads and a Sunday brunch.
So you're asking this council, first, that sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Did I mention I'm hungry, too? And it's great to hear that, that, uh, that building will be, uh, another restaurant. So that's, that's outstanding. So you're asking this council, excuse me, to add an additional full liquor license, sorry, BV, yeah, BV liquor license. Tell us what you planned it. So it sounded like it was a days, but what specifically were you, tell us about the alcohol use.
Just for Sunday brunch. So, so our normal concept during the day, you know, we're, we're not going to sell alcohol. We're going to be open from eight to three, you know? But we want the option of doing Bloody Marys, mimosas, maybe a really nice cocktail or two for Sunday brunch.
Eli, is it Saturday and Sunday brunch or just Sunday?
Just Sunday brunch.
Of just Sunday, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe at some point in the future that might be an option, but we're starting off with just Sunday brunch.
So our past process has been to do a limited BV license for six months.
Yep.
Have you come back in front of us, kind of like you've heard with dancing and entertainment? Assuming everything is, is spotless, then we would then consider granting a full license on that, which would mean you could do the mimosas, but not the Bloody Marys in the beginning?
That's fine.
All right. So if that's accepted, and it sounds like it is, this council, we just need a motion to call for a public hearing to create a limited BV license for February. That'll be, I'm sorry. Let me try that again. Tentative first reading on July, on February 7th with a public, call for public hearing on February 28th for a limited BV.
So move. Second or third.
I just want to say congratulations. It's such a thrill to have Eli back.
Yeah.
I mean, come on, we got the chop champion twice, right? Remember? And I think about your Sunday brunch and your brunches at, you know, when you were all the time. So I'm very happy to, to see you back in town and or not, you know, kind of where, where you were once upon a time here before you got to be so famous.
It's good to be back.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
Thank you.
And we're super excited to have you and have you occupying that, that empty cafe that's been empty for a while. So it'll be nice to see the lights on and, and we wish you best of luck.
Thank you very much.
So if anybody watched Chop?
Oh, jeez.
Right? My wife and I watched Chop, my kids and my wife and I watched Chop. And this gentleman right here made clam chowder in 30 minutes? Is that what it was?
Yeah, from Martha Stewart.
Yes. I'm interested to see you do that again. I really am.
You don't want me to make that clam chowder. There's some weird ingredients in it.
We're hungry. We're hungry, so.
Well, the chowder will be on the menu.
Outstanding. So we had a motion and a second?
If I may, was Chris Santos the, one of the judges, that particular one?
He was not, no, no, which is unfortunate because he's from Bristol, right?
Yes, my neighbor.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Three different episodes and he wasn't, I didn't get the chance to meet him, so.
You didn't, okay. And I see you have Perseid's Nata here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, those are the little custards, you know? Because those are really good.
And you're going to be, you're going to be making every single one of them.
We're going to be making everything in-house, yeah.
You can hear the audience.
You can hear we're all excited.
Any other discussion?
Smiles. We, we are good, we do, we do, we're good with quality assurance. Anytime you want to run some food by us, let us know. We're happy, we're happy to come down and check it out.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say that we got like a bit of trivia because I did not know any of us, Charles.
Yeah, it's my label. Nobody, it's very confusing.
Nobody knows that, right?
No.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you guys.
Good luck. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the appointments. The first appointment is G1. This is the Bristol Housing Authority. This is one term set to expire January 2029 and one unexpired term set to expire January 2025. We have Helen Tina Barbosa with interest in reappointment. And then we also have the recommendation from Candy Panta, the executive director. And then we have Donna St. Angelo with interest in appointment. And we also have Kimberly Teves also with interest in appointment. Kim is here, I'm not sure that Donna's here.
I would, I'd move that we approve Helen Barbosa to continue her term and that we appoint Donna St. Angelo
Second.
Other vacant position.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony to reappoint Tina Barbosa and to appoint Donna St. Angelo. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And just for the public record, we did interview these people last week.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is G2. This is the tree warden and this is term set to expire January 2025. You have Steven Saracino with interest in reappointment. George Vogts with interest in appointment and the town administrator's recommendation.
Motion to reappoint Steven Saracino?
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to reappoint Steve Saracino. Any discussion?
Just want to thank him for, I mean, six years of service. You've really increased the tree diversity. So it's been fantastic and I know you've helped out with that. It was a, there was an ash tree. I think there was a, some sort of disease that was going on and you've been vigilant on that. So we thank you for your service.
Steve's back there in the corner if you didn't know that. So. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I'll say on behalf of the council, thank you, George, for putting your name in as a, for consideration.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item is G3. This is the Capital Projects Commission. This is one vacant term set to expire May 2027. We do have interest in appointment from Alan Spenn, who's also here.
The clerk and I were speaking a bit earlier and there is a, sorry, there is a alternate position currently and there's an, there's an unfilled full position.
Correct.
And that first alternate is, refresh my memory.
Myra Page.
Thank you. And our, this, this council's typical process is to move an existing auxiliary or alternate up to a full position. Is, just figured I would put that there before we took the next step.
I would make a motion that we do move Myra to that position.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to move Myra from the alternate position to the full position. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And now we have an alternate position.
Have we interviewed?
Yes, we did.
I'm sorry, yes, we did.
I do recall that.
Motion to appoint Alan Spenn to the alternate position.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to appoint Alan Spenn to the alternate position. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G4 and this is for the juvenile hearing board. This is two full members and one alternate member term set to expire December 2026. We have Matthew Cabral with interest in appointment, Diane Davis with interest in a, in reappointment, Henry Cabral with interest in reappointment. We have a Joanne Wade with interest in appointment, Victoria Remus with interest in appointment, Scott Extemin, Extemet with interest in our appointment and Mark Reinhardt also with interest in appointment.
I make a motion to reappoint the three candidates that are currently on the board. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Matthew Cabral, Diane Davis, and Henry Cabral. Any discussion?
Yes. Okay, I would have to say, I was reading through the bios of the other candidates and I was very, very impressed. I know it's awesome to see that folks step up, you know, to be willing to serve. And certainly I hope that they stay tuned, you know, for another opportunity.
Yeah, I would, I would, I don't know if they're interested, but let, let them know other opportunities that we may have because I feel the same way. Very impressive. And there's probably some committees and subcommittees like through HES or whatever that some of these people could be involved with. I think that would be very beneficial to the people of Bristol as well as, you know, giving them involvement.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I wasn't expecting so much interest for the juvenile hearing board, but I'm, I'm guessing that a lot of people that were interested in that, thought that they could really make an impact there.
Yeah.
I was surprised too myself at that.
Any other discussion? Well, I'll say it on behalf of the council that we thank Joanne, Victoria, Scott, and Mark for their interest in being on juvenile hearing board. And mentioned already is that please take a look at our website. If there's an open position that you're interested in, please put your name in there or, as Tony said, stay tuned. Opportunities present themselves periodically. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G5 and this is Harbor Master. And this is a term set to expire January 2027. And this is Greg Marsili with interest in reappointment.
Motion to appoint. Go ahead, Tim.
Just did it.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to reappoint. Discussion?
Yes, I just have to thank Greg for all of the years of service, you know? It's nice to take a walk on the waterfront there and see all those new docks there and guess who's put the finger on them. He has, along with the staff, and it's much appreciated.
Yeah, I also want to echo the councilman's comments. I think when I got on the council, the harbor was in a very, very different situation and Greg, with you at the helm, we've, and with the committee and the council and the administrators, everybody involved. It's in a very good situation. I think if anybody hasn't had a chance, I would encourage everybody to read the Bristol Phoenix article on the financials of the harbor. They're doing quite well down there. So keep doing what you're doing. Thank you, Greg.
Any other discussion? I think my colleagues captured well, Mr. Administrator.
Fully agree and thank you for reappointing the Harbor Master. He does an excellent job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is G6 and this is for the Assistant Harbor Master. And these are for terms set to expire January 2025 and we have recommendation from the Harbor Master.
Based on the recommendation from the Harbor Master, I move that we approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G7. This is the auxiliary Harbor Master and this is for terms set to expire January 2025. And we have recommendations from the Harbor Master.
Likewise, with the recommendation from the Harbor Master, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the CRMC representative. This is for a term set to expire January 2025. And we have John Tryonel III with interest in reappointment.
I make a motion that we approve the reappointment of John.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron to reappoint. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G9. This is the special constables, private investigators, matrons, and retired, retiree officers, term set to expire January 2025. And we have recommendations for appointment from the chief of police.
Based on a positive recommendations, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony to approve. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a reservation on some of these folks that are here, like in Tony, et cetera, and some of these other folks.
Well, I'm still waiting to know what.
Well, Mary is here, too.
I know, because I mean, I've been on, I've been one of these for many, many years.
Councilman Texara, I was glad to see everybody's background check was okay.
I know.
If you see us directing traffic, go the other way. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G10. This is special constable fire police term set to expire January 2025. And we have recommendations for appointment from the fire chief.
Based on the recommendations from the fire chief, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to approve. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G11. This is Board of Tenant Affairs. This is two terms set to expire January 2026. We have Linda Haru with interest in reappointment, Richard Hunter also with interest in reappointment, and we have Donna Falco with interest in appointment.
I make a motion that we reappoint the candidates that are there, Linda and Richard.
Second, and thank you to Donna for her interest?
Yes.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Linda and Richard. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And it was already said, a thank you to Donna for showing interest.
Yes.
Donna Falco.
The next item on the agenda is G12. This is for the North and East Burial Grounds Commission. This is one term set to expire January 2029. We have Kathleen Moran with interest in reappointment and Jennifer Olet with interest in appointment.
I make a motion to reappoint Kathleen Moran.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to reappoint Kathleen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G13. This is the Bristol County Water Authority and this is one term, one unexpired term set to expire February 2025. And we have Georgina McDonald with a letter of resignation.
I make a motion to approve the, or accept, I should say, the letter of resignation with a thank you for her service to Georgina.
And also go out to add.
To advertise.
And advertise.
Is there a second?
Second. Mary, Mary, seconded.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to accept the resignation and go out for advertising. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is G14. This is the zoning board of review. This is two unexpired terms set to expire March 2025. The first is Derek Tipton and this is the letter of resignation. We have Paul Blasbog with interest in appointment, George Duarte also with interest in appointment, and Kimberly Teves also with interest in appointment, and all three have been interviewed.
Motion to appoint George Duarte and Kim Teves. Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Aaron to appoint George Duarte and Kim Teves. Any discussion?
Just want to thank Paul for stepping up and we really appreciate.
Yeah.
Interviewing.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say if Paul's watching right here, right now, welcome to Bristol, Paul, and keep your eyes open for some other positions.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Good luck.
The next item on the agenda is G15 and this is for the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. And this is one vacant seat set to expire August 2026. And we have George Berman with interest in appointment, who was also interviewed last week.
I make a motion that we appoint George Berman.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to appoint George Berman to the Harbor Commission Advisory Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is where I always take a moment on behalf of the council and the town to thank the boards and commissions, more specifically the members of the boards and commissions, for the time and effort and energy they take away from their family and their friends and their own personal interests to give back to the community. You just heard a whole bunch of names and those are one names on multiple boards with multiple people there. That's why Bristol is Bristol, or that's a huge part of why Bristol is Bristol. The volunteerism, the willingness to give back to the community to make it a better place, to make it what it is right now. So this council says, thank you.
Yeah, well said.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item of business is this old business, H1, Town Administrator Contency. And this is in regards to consideration of a traffic calming policy and the Bristol Police Department, oh, they already did their presentation, but this is continued from December 6th.
So this was continued for some adjustments and some clarity after that discussion that happened? Mr. Administrator?
Sure. So the chief had Lieutenant Wasni reach out to some additional departments and communities and he's going to reference where we got the 85% percentile as, as the, the number that would trigger the, a road to be considered for traffic calming. So 85 percentile, our recommendation would be 85 percentile of the vehicles have to be going five over the limit. Meaning there's 100 vehicles, 85 of them would be going at least 30 miles an hour in a 25. So that was the main, I believe that was the main issue last meeting. And we, we gave, we also included in the packet a, an example on Inowamsket where a traffic study was done on Inowamsket. 25 mile per hour zone in the 85 percentile was 30.4 miles an hour, which would, which would qualify the street for consideration for traffic calming. We all know we've, we have many complaints about speeding on Inowamsket, so we think that the 85 is, is a good number. And that's what the experts that design the traffic, the traffic monitoring equipment, that's what they recommend. You have any question for, questions about the details, Lieutenant Wasni and the chief would be happy to explain.
I have a couple, actually. My recollection from the last. I have a couple, actually. Um, my recollection from the last meeting, some of the questions that came up, you've addressed, um, or we have addressed. One of them was, is there a removal policy? So that is on here. There was also adjustments to how many residents need to, I'm sorry, how many people, residents who are on this particular affected street would need to sign, and I can see that we moved it from fifty to sixty percent to make sure that the, it's a strong majority there, which I liked a lot. Additional to that, there was questions about, um, speed, and we've obviously addressed that with the five miles an hour over. Please refresh this council's memory. It was, what was it before? And we moved it down.
It was ten, ten miles per hour.
Thank you. Okay. This is, uh, a much cleaner policy. I thought the first draft was excellent. Um, this is even better. Um, and you've addressed some, I'm not saying those things that aren't addressed, but those are the things that I've remembered at the moment. Counsel?
I would just say, um, I'm pleased with the cleanup and the, the updates. I would encourage to go green and, and to do as much as you can digitally to, uh, survey the residents, uh, rather than use the town approval forms and papers, if we can, and to kind of move away from the paper. Also, I think it's easier for tracking as well. Um, but I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know. Maybe you want to comment.
Oh, thank you. We'll, uh, we'll consider that.
Thank you.
And, oh, please. Yeah, I, I just want to say, I think that there's been a lot of improvement here as well. Um, I really like that progress flow chart. That really clarifies everything that's gonna be happening. I think that's gonna be really helpful for the residents. And, uh, thank you for the additional section on removal as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Administrator, you and I had conversation a day or so ago in regards to affected, and I just said, living on the street itself, but there was language in here, I agree with it, that spoke about that the town would, uh, define the affected area. Could you speak on that just a little bit more? So Anawamsket is actually a perfect example of streets that feed into it. So.
So we, we want to determine what the area influence on the street is. Um, Anawamsket would be everyone on the street, but that, that really needs to be the, this, a decision made by, uh, the, the, the people doing the traffic study, which is the police department. High Street, for an example, is a very long street, so I don't think the area or influence would be the entire length. If we're looking to put a, 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 some type of a speed control feature, at Burton, Burton Street, you're not gonna survey the people down at Perry Street. So I think it would be, you know, something reasonable with a quarter mile or, you know, two thousand feet, but.
Kind of case by case.
It has to be.
Okay.
There's, you know, there's. We can't, we can't define everything in this policy. It would be, I, we'd have to have volumes of it. So we'll make a decision of how long on the street we're gonna involve the neighbors, but it's really not gonna affect some of them on the other end, so.
Well, it will affect them in, in a sense because they'll be driving over the speed bumps if they're speed bumps. I mean, they'll be on the road. The only thing that I would be a little concerned about is, you know, like depending on we, I, I don't like leaving it just subjective like that. Like will the, it, but I understand each area is different. So if you have, to what degree are people coming out to like, you know, Narrows or Anawamsket or, um, Hope Worth, that it should be the entire street, or should it be like a radius from like a particular intersection? Because people are coming out from, from those areas. I mean, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm not sure that you, some of those are very, very long streets and I'm not sure. So I mean, at the bottom of Hope Worth is gonna care what's, what, what's up in the top of it. But they're gonna be driving over it. So I don't, I don't really like leaving it subjective. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just saying that that concerns me a little bit. Um, and I hope that there's a lot of different, you know, we talk about different devices in here. I mean, as I went over the three very, I think they're very high along India Point, um, to get onto the highway today. I mean, you must tip over your car. I do not like them. I understand the need for traffic calming. We have a lot of east-west streets that are downhill, uphill, and people go very fast on them. But I think we really have to be, um, put it in how we implement all of these.
Chief, the, um, speed signs, can you talk about those just for a moment? They change behavior?
They do change behavior. You know, it's a three sixty-five, twenty-four-seven educational tool. So the police can't be on one given street, you know, educating the public, uh, every moment. And, you know, it certainly rewards of good behavior. It, it, and it also identifies when somebody is exceeding, you know, the speed limit. And I think it's a good tool to keep people in check, uh, when we have streets that are extremely problematic, like in Anawamsket and Bayview, where we, where we implemented these with, with the council approval with the last budget cycle. And I can tell you just from my own driving habits, coming out of the police station and going down Bayview Avenue, uh, the weight and size of the vehicle, uh, it, you immediately realize that you have to apply the brakes in order to, uh, travel, travel the speed limit. So I do think that they're going to have, uh, desired outcomes, you know, for the residents who have been deeply concerned about, you know, the police department. We started with, uh, education enforcement. We started with additional signage in the particular area, and we just weren't getting the outcomes that residents were seeking i- in those particular areas. So this was the next step of the next evolution into addressing, you know, a traffic calming. Um, some communities are going over to, you know, uh, traffic enforcement with, you know, uh, speed enforcement with tickets, you know? And, uh, this is, uh, certainly, uh, a great, uh, tool to avoid enforcing and sending out tickets and establishing a radar trap situation i- in the community. We're hoping that folks adhere, you know, to those, uh, devices and, and we, we, we get the desired outcomes. But in the traffic engineering world, we have taken every progressive step, uh, and we will go out. Uh, they have been out now for about, about a month, month and a half, and we will go out and we will, uh, again, continue with education enforcement, but we, I personally have seen, um, I don't travel Anawamsket as much as I do Bayview, but I've seen a cultural change, uh, on Bayview. The longevity of that is yet to be seen. It's new. It's the new, uh, bright toy, uh, that's out there, and, and we just hope that people, uh, understand that it's a problematic road, and we hope that those devices going both ways, you know, uh, to catch, uh, travel motorists traveling in both directions, uh, that educational piece that they need. But just to kind of answer a question, you know, Mary, about how long of the survey, ultimately, the council, you know, has the final say on any type of traffic calming. So if we were to submit and, and take a street like High Street and we went in two hundred houses or we went to a certain area, and you wanted us to do more of the sitting council, wanted us to do more, that's what we'll do. So there is oversight, i- i- you know, just because it's not a finality in the policy, you folks also can say to us, hey, we'd like to see another hundred houses, or we'd like to see the entire street prior to making the decision. So you folks will always have the final say, or, you know, to send us back out and acquire more data, you know? There may be, uh, a secondary traffics, you know, study. It could be, uh, you know, a before a construction site, before an event. There are always factors that determine the speed on the road.
Chief, um, those signs, and I'm glad if I've figured it out when, uh, the chairman asked, you know, this, the, uh, stop, not stop signs, the speed signs. I was thinking about the hot copy, not necessarily electronics, but anyway, with the electronic, can we gather any additional information besides just one? The, uh, the drivers of their speed, can you gather information on those, or you have to beat the largest sign to gather information?
Yes, that does not, um, give us any data on the average speed of the roadway. We, we have the equipment here in town. We have made the investment. So we have those tools to determine and to conduct speed studies, but those devices specifically are for the static speed at which the car is going for. There is no data that's recorded, and they are green. They do work off of solar energy. So we are not drawing anything down off of the grid, uh, to operate those signs.
But I, I have to agree with you. It does, you know, it makes you very much aware of it, and, uh, even after they get removed, I know who are another area, not here in town, elsewhere. And, uh, it certainly makes you aware, oh, I gotta slow down. This area here calls for a twenty-five or thirty speed limit, uh, um, you know? So, yeah, I agree with you that there's a behavior change.
I got one of those on the way to hockey practice.
I do, um, and, and the resident should know that if they are speeding, exceeding the speed limit and it does register, there is no fine component that the town has not designed that to be a system where your speed is recorded and a violation is forthcoming. Those are an educational tool, and we ask that folks, it, you know, to take that into consideration, uh, when they're operating, uh, throughout all the roads in town.
At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion talking about, uh, I mean, down to drainage, why, why not just a straight speed bump? And the, I'm gonna quote the administrator, the chiclets, right? I like that. It's a, it's a great way of explaining it, the bumps in the road. Allow water to pass, um, and it allows, uh, instead of, instead of building up and going both sides. So it, it allows for that to continue. There was a lot of efforts and energy put into this, but I, for the, for the public's sake, what we're looking at is a traffic calming flow request, and what it tells you is that if you, if this council approves what's in front of us, a resident would request, uh, traffic calming measures, and then Bristol staff would ensure the forms are complete. There's forms in here. It requires signatures, um, and then it's not a voting member, just a resident, um, of, of that area, we'll say it that way. Resident circulates the petition, so it's the requester's responsibility to get those, um, uh, that petition signed, as we talked about. Sixty percent of the, uh, of the affected areas, however that is defined, is re- is required to take the next step, which is the content, the town would conduct a comprehensive traffic study, and then there would be a traffic study showing eighty-fifth percentile. You heard that and what, what that meant. Um, and then that recommendation provided by the town administrator, excuse me, the police department and the public works, would come in front of this council, and then if approved by the council, then, then it needs to take the next step, which is, we need funds to do that. The signs themselves are quite expensive. The chiclets are not just a bump of tar. This goes a lot more that goes into it, including the engineering study. So there would have to be funding appropriated for any steps that we took above and beyond what has already been expressed here. Did I skip anything?
No.
Lieutenant? Let me steal your thunder, sir.
You didn't skip a thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Outstanding. So we're looking for a motion, correct me if I'm wrong here, to approve this traffic calming policy, was the revised draft that's in front of us. Um, I can probably just stop right there, correct?
I move that we approve it. Second.
Motion made by Tony seconded by Tim to approve as stated. Any discussion?
Uh, just briefly, thank you to the administrator for addressing some of the concerns of the residents and bring this forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and thanks to the police department chief and lieutenant.
Thank you.
For your hard effort and work here. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I one. This is Town Clerk Kidero, and this is a request for amendments to the local ordinances regarding license requirements for secondhand consignment goods, resale goods, and thrift goods and antiques.
And motion to approve?
So this would be actually to, um, for consideration, well, you already drafted it. So it would be consideration for first reading at the February seventh meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Tim seconded by Aaron as stated. Any discussion?
Just, so this is gonna be sent to the solicitor to draft it?
Actually, so I, I went ahead and drafted it because this is required by state law. So we're, we're just making you aware of it and would like to have first reading at the next meeting.
So you're pretending we have a choice kind of thing. So outstanding.
This is actually passed already, and it's gonna go into. That's past legislation, yes. And, okay.
Did I ask for a vote on that already?
No, not yet.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I two, and this is Sharon and Warren Walshlager, one twenty-three Beach Road. And this is a request for voter initiative to enact a proposed ordinance prohibiting deer hunting on town of Bristol properties as follows. All forms of deer hunting, including but not limited to bow hunting on all property owned, leased, or otherwise controlled by the town of Bristol, is hereby prohibited. And the council to enact a proposed ordinance, all forms of deer hunting, including but not limited, I'm not sure why that's there twice. I think that's a typo, sorry. It's supposed to be only there once. And then we also have a memo from the Board of Chemists's office noting that they did receive the number of qualified signatures, and also for the record that there was a, um, letter received, um, that the council will have as we see that meeting from the New England Back Country Hunter and Anglers in opposition to the request.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
If you could state your names for the, and, and addresses for the record, please.
My name is Warren Walshlager, and I'm joined by my wife.
Sharon Walshlager.
And we live at one-two-three Beach Road.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. It's, uh, nice to see you all.
You too.
And, uh, we also got hungry sitting here listening to all of the action, and so, but anyway, thank you. We're joined here tonight as well, just, uh, if I can introduce Mr. Dennis Tabella. He's a well-known and respected, uh, director of Defenders of Animals here in, uh, Rhode Island. And we very much appreciate the opportunity to talk about the proposed ordinance, uh, with the clerk referenced. I, uh, just want to say by background, like many of our friends and neighbors, we had a lot of concerns when we first saw that Bristol was entering into this MOU, this cooperative agreement with D E M. Uh, some of them were concerns about the safety of, of all residents, but more specifically, uh, those residents who had properties that abutted the territory that was, uh, earmarked for bow hunting. Uh, we also had some concerns about the new, uh, requirements for D E M to monitor the archery proficiency requirements that were built into the MOU, extra layer of, uh, proficiency that is not typically, uh, required here in Bristol. Uh, both Sharon and I have backgrounds in public health, and we had real concerns about uh, the arguments being made that there would be a correlation between the reduction in, uh, deer population and the incidence of tick-borne disease, in, in particular Lyme disease. There's a very little hard empirical data supporting that, and, uh, there is some, but, but it's, um, it's just as easy to find conflicting data that says there's no correlation between, uh, reduction in, in deer populations and tick-borne diseases. Uh, and finally, we just had concern about the cruelty of bow hunting. So, uh, we recognize that this is a new program. We also recognize that D E M just came out with a study today, so it's good. Uh, but, uh, our concerns have really not been alleviated since we first heard that this program has been, uh, had, uh, was going to go into place with the MOU. So we took advantage of the opportunity to, uh, via section five oh three to move forward and start collecting signatures for the voter initiative, uh, and that's what we did. And it's part of that process. We did reach out to our colleague, uh, Mr. Tabella. Uh, you can see by what we're wearing that, uh, Sharon and I are both long-term supporters of, and in fact, members of Defenders of Animals. Uh, and we've worked with Mr. Tabella on a variety of issues, both programmatic and legislative, primarily at the State House, not at the local level. But we greatly admire both his expertise and his advocacy, and, uh, so with the chair's permission, I'd like to ask, uh, that Mr. Tabella be given the opportunity to address the council, uh, and express some greater concerns.
Of course.
My name is Dennis Tabella. I, I live at one sixty Amherst Road in Wallack. I'm a former Bristol resident, by the way. I go back to, uh, when Michael Belzano was the town administrator, and so far back ago. I, I, I worked at Dixon Corporation, which was on Medicom Avenue across from Regal's Restaurant some years ago. And I got my BA from Roger Williams, so I had a lot of connections to Bristol, and I miss Bristol. It was good days.
Welcome back.
But I have a serious issue, uh, that I'd like to speak to you about. According to D E M, on average, there are two thousand two hundred and fourteen deer hunted and killed by hunters in Rhode Island. So when you take that number and you multiply it by twenty years, that would mean that forty-four thousand deer are killed in a twenty-year period. So the question is, what town experienced a positive outcome from that? There isn't a town in Rhode Island because they continued hunting every year. They never solved their problem where they could stop it. Do you know why? Because there's something called a bounce-back factor. Female deer will produce more deer if there's less deer and there's more food. It's as simple as that. They'll pu- they'll produce maybe three babies when there's food. When is there more food available, when there's more deer killed? This just goes on and on and on. So you never really solve your problem. Take East Providence. East Providence has had deer for decades. They don't have a hunting season, bow hunting season for deer. Take Warwick. Warwick has had deer for decades. They do not have a hunting season for deer. How could they do that? How come they're not being overrun by deer? Because the deer can take care of its own population. They only live to be, what, four or five years old? Your population in Bristol is two thousand two hundred and ninety people per square mile. East Providence is three thousand five hundred and forty-nine people per square mile. Not that much of a difference. Why am I pointing that out? Because it's dangerous. You got too many people living in Bristol to be having hunting seasons every year. Collisions. The Insurance Institute and others have stated that the mating season, combined with the hunting season, is when they help, they help at the same time, as you know. It's the combination of those two things that are causing your collision problems. It's not just the mating season, it's the fact that the hunting season is taking place during the mating season. So you've got more activity with these deer moving around. That's how they're ending up getting coll- collided with automobiles. Most people have liability insurance for their rotors. They don't, not enough people have comprehensive insurance. You hit a deer and that's all you have is liability insurance. You're stuck. Your insurance company's not gonna pay for that damage. The highest deer auto collision, according to AAA in Rhode Island, is in South Kingstown. They have the highest collision with deer. Guess which town kills the most deer other than Block Island? It's South Kingstown. They're killing the most deer out of all the towns in Rhode Island and they got the biggest collision problem. What does that tell you? That killing more deer doesn't get rid of your collision problem. Then you got the issue of cruelty. There, there have been a lot of studies about this. Cincinnati, unrecovered deer. Some deer survive for seven days before succumbing to their wounds. Clean kills are rare. The Mason National Wildlife Refuge said this. Clean kills are rare. Virginia, eight deer killed, nine deer wounded. Texas, Walter Buck Wildlife Management Area, one hundred and one. Bow hunters launched eighty-six arrows, wounded eleven deer, killing one animal. Minnesota, for every hundred deer legally killed, a hundred and sixteen were lost. In other words, they weren't recovered. Michigan, you know what their wounded rate is with deer, with bow hunting? Fifty percent. Do you really think that bow hunters in Rhode Island are more accurate than hunters in Virginia and Michigan and Illinois and all these other states? I don't think so. There was twenty-four studies done across the country that indicate that bow hunting is inhumane and wasteful. Nineteen eighty-eight study, Department of Conservation in Illinois. Bow hunting has never been an effective tool for deer control. Texas, Parks and Wildlife, we do not advocate, advocate hunting for controlling population. You know that a lot of people think, and this, this was brought up before and it's been brought up by DEM, that Lyme disease connection with deer. The fact of the matter is, other animals carry these ticks, including dogs, horses, cattle, raccoons, gray squirrels, chipmunks, and birds. A variety of birds carry these same ticks. You can't kill all these animals. And you could kill every deer in Bristol and you'd still have a Lyme disease issue. The question is this, do you want to solve the problem with Bristol residents? Or do you want to solve the problem of DEM and hunters? You know that DEM receives matching funds. They make no, they don't try to hide this. They've received matching funds for every hunting license. They get reimbursed from the federal government. It's been going on for years. It's blood money. I'm sorry. It's blood money. Yes, they use that money to do some really good things, but you also use it to promote hunting. It's blood money. Does Bristol want to be part of this cruelty? Listen, you got a lot of studies that were done that you could take a look at, that we can present to you next week. And I know if you, if you can hold off voting on this, this would be good. Because these studies were done by uh schools, colleges in, in, in New Jersey. They've been done all over the place. And you need to see all of this stuff because there's too much information to talk about tonight. And if you weren't, you know, I've been hit with this before. You gotta listen to the experts. DEM's the experts. You know who the experts are? DEM thought they were above the law on Block Island when they were doing jack lighting of deer. That's when you shine the fire, headlights in deer's eyes and you freeze them and then you shoot them. They lost that case. We took them to court. They lost that case. They appealed. They lost on appeal. They couldn't get it straightened out until they went to the State General Assembly to fix it up and appeal. They shot a, a, a bear out of a tree in Foster, even though the veterinarian at Roger Williams Park offered to give them tranquilizer equipment to get the deer, that bear out of the tree, and they killed it. It wasn't attacking anyone. They were snapping the necks of female swans in order to get the population down.
I would ask that you stay, and I know you're generally on topic, but this is going off a little bit.
Okay, I just wanna make that point.
Yes.
That you need, the town council really needs to look at some experts from other states, other towns, before you make a decision, before you get into another agreement with DEM. That's all I'm asking. That can be done in a couple of weeks. We can put that in your hands. And you can, you can talk to these people from other states, from other towns. You can get all the information from them. There are other ways to control that population, non-lethal ways to control that population of deer. And you really need to think about what I said before about South Kingstown. Perfect example, they're at the top of the list of collisions. And yet they're the town that kills more deer than any other town except for Block, Block Island. You don't wanna turn Bristol into another Prudence Island. That's all that is, is a deer hunting place now. Block, Block Island, if you, if you know the history about deer, who brought the first deer over to Block Island? It was DEM. They want hunting to take place in all, every spot they can find. Look to East Providence, look to Warwick. No hunting season for bow hunting in, in those two cities. And they are not overrun by deer.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So I'm just suggesting that you take a look at the experts from other areas before you decide on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one last comment that I had.
Certainly.
As I say, I was happy to see that DEM just today released a uh, a report. It included a lot of data on Bristol. In fact, they touted the fact that there was a significant reduction in roadkill correlated to a significant increase in the harvesting. But you know, we all know that data, you can use data in a lot of different ways. If you look at the data from two thousand and twenty-one, you may have that report in front of you. Roadkill in two thousand and twenty-one was thirty-four. Harvest was only sixteen. That harvest went up by four hundred percent this year, all the way up to sixty-three. Yet the roadkill went up from thirty-four to forty-one. So you may hear that, yes, there's been a thirty percent reduction roadkill associated with this program. But if you compare the exact same data to the previous year, it's actually been a twenty percent increase since it was implemented. So thank you for your.
Thank you. We certainly, we may have some more questions, but I know we have representation from DM. I would ask if you could. Thank you.
Give me one second to get set up here. Computer has seemed to frozen right now. While I'm getting this set up, my name's Dylan Ferreira. I'm the whitetail deer biologist for, I'm with Rhode Island Division of Fish and Wildlife. And I'm also joined by some of my colleagues, uh my supervising biologist, who supervises our wildlife section, our outreach biologist supervisor, and also members of our law enforcement division. My computer is froze right now, which is the worst possible time, right?
Can you reset it?
I'm about to shut it down.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, we'll take a five-minute recess while you do that so you can go up to speed.
Perfect.
We'll be right back.
It should be fine. It's just my computer froze when I unplugged it. I had it sitting there the entire time and figured now's the time to unplug it and of course it acted up. Yeah, nah, just had to reboot everything. It should work. Nice. Nope, I'm on right now. I'm on. I just wanna make sure that I have the ability to share. Okay, guess I'm ready now. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. So, like I said, my name's Dylan Ferreira with Rhode Island Division of Fish and Wildlife. I'm the deer biologist. And I just wanted to go over real quickly that with Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, um our mission through DEM is to protect, restore, and promote our environment to ensure Rhode Island remains a wonderful place to live, visit, and raise a family. So you can see on the right-hand side, there's a ton of initiatives and programs that DEM as a whole operates. And one of those is within the Division of Fish and Wildlife, which I found myself in. The mission is to ensure that freshwater and wildlife resource of the state of Rhode Island will be conserved and managed for equitable and sustainable use. Um, like the gentleman before me stated, we're funded through federal funds and state dollars through hunting and fishing licenses. The Pittman and Robertson Act of eighteen, uh nineteen thirty-seven um was basically a tax that hunters put on themselves. That way, there would be funds to promote and conserve wildlife into the future. So you have this cycle of success, as some call it. Hunters go out and they buy things or there's an excise tax that the manufacturers pass on to the consumers. That money is then funneled to the federal government and then through a um somewhat complicated formula gets reallocated to the state agencies like Rhode Island Division of Fish and Wildlife. And then we're able to use that money um to continue to do wildlife research, like was also mentioned. So here you can see there's a ton of wildlife research, um conservation and projects that go on. We have brant banding, roadie critter kits, which basically used for um, am I too far? Sorry. We have our Rhode Island.
Too loud.
Yeah.
Is that better? Live mic.
Now you can hear you. Uh, we have our critter kits that are used across um a bunch of our Rhode Island public schools, hiking trails, New England Cotton Tail Restoration, Salt Marsh Sparrows, Habitat Projects, like the Dutch Island Burn. We have a magazine for students, Wildlife Explorer, Brook Trout. There's a wa- suite of wildlife conservation and research projects that is funded through Pittman and Robertson Act, which is the US Fish and Wildlife Service, which is matched by those hunting dollars. So those are critical for us. Myself, as the Whitetail Deer Project Leader, my main goal is to manage Rhode Island's deer population. So that's looking at a healthy deer herd, healthy forest, public safety, human deer conflicts. And the way we manage deer is through hunter-harvest. So that's the main way that states across the country are managing deer herds. A little bit of Whitetail Deer one-on-one. I'll keep it short and sweet. They live basically everywhere across the country, everywhere within Rhode Island. They eat almost everything, acorns, apples, abrevites, euro's bush, you name it, they eat it. Reproduction, which is where things get a little bit more complicated, so I'll dive in here. They evolved with natural predators here in Rhode Island. So there may not be wolves and mountain lions here now. And I repeat, there's not wolves and mountain lions here now, but there was at some time. So deer evolved with those on the landscape and have a high reproductive potential. So they're able to give birth to singles, twins, and when healthy, triplets. So deer are bred, a female's bred by a male. That male has the ability to feed, uh to breed multiple females. So that female will give birth in the spring. Once that foal becomes six months of age, they're reproductively viable again. So that's why they have a high reproductive potential. And then as that doe gets older and older, she's able to achieve uh twins and sometimes even triplets. Coyotes are not a viable predator for deer in Rhode Island. They may take the old and the weak, or the sick, or the injured from deer vehicle collisions, but they're not taking down um healthy, wild whitetail deer in Rhode Island. So what are the current problems in Bristol that we are associating with deer? Tick-borne diseases, deer vehicle collisions, property damage, and forest and herd health. Tick-borne diseases, like there, like was mentioned before, Lyme disease is the number one. Tick-borne disease that people are really concerned about here in Rhode Island and across the northeast. It has been shown in Connecticut, a reduction in deer density did have a reduction in Lyme disease prevalence. So a seventy six product seventy six percent reduction in tick abundance, a seventy percent reduction in entomology. Entomologic risk index and eighty percent reduction in resident reported cases in Lyme disease. Another thing that's concerning is lone star ticks. Those carry the disease alpha gout, which is a meat allergy. So if you were to get bit by a lone star tick, you then become allergic to red meat. Here's some cases of or cases across Rhode Island from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty two. Anemiasmosis, babesiosis, not going to pronounce the third one, and Lyme disease. When obviously the Lyme disease is the one that again, we're caring the most about in this situation. There's been a significant increase through time, especially in the northeast here, like likewise in Rhode Island. Deer vehicle collisions are the major cause that we have. Issues in Bristol. It's one of the highest deer vehicle collisions per square mile in the state. And on average, and those damages run upwards of six thousand dollars. They've been increasing since two thousand and nine. State Farm stated that one in ninety six is a likelihood of being involved in a deer vehicle collision. And it's not correlated to the hunting season, but more with the life cycle. So here's a graph that we're going to look at, and this explains when deer are being struck by vehicles. So again, this has to do with their life cycle. Deer are are going to move more during their breeding season. What happens is a doe becomes in heat, she's receptive to breed. And the males are out looking for that female, so they will travel miles and miles looking for females. Once they breed one, they're just looking for the next one. They continue their search for receptive female. So they'll breed usually the first two weeks in November. So you'll see that spike occur. In the beginning of October, as that starts to happen, and it'll peter off at the end of November. So our hunting season in Rhode Island goes from September through the end of February, and you can see that. Peak does not occur through the entire season. It's primarily due to the breeding season. You'll note that there's another peak in May and June, and that's right when. Pregnant does that are ready to drop their fawns are starting to. Fatten up and getting ready to drop their fawn, and so they can continue to feed their fawns through time. The same thing will happen with the yearlings at around six months old, which is that October, November timeframe. Those males don't want to interbreed with their family, with their mother or their sisters, so they'll begin to disperse. Across the landscape, looking for a place to be and a place to breed unrelated females. I can't talk about deer vehicle collisions without talking about tips to avoid them. Stay alert, pay attention to deer crossing sign. That doesn't mean a deer is only going to cross at the sign. They're there for people, not for deer. And we place those strategically at places where it occurs often. So two places of high quality habitat. That are on adjacent sides of the roads are great places for deer to cross because they're going from one place to the other. Use your high beams, flick them at the deer. Sometimes that'll scare them away. Don't swerve. That might cause a crash, which might be worse than hitting a deer. We don't want someone to get injured. Brake isn't necessary. You don't want somebody to rear end you if there's somebody right on your tail. Make sure to honk your horn. The deer might leave. And other drivers might be aware. Peak season again, October through December. Watch out for animals during dusk and dawn. And if you see one, there's probably going to be more, so go slow and just continue at an appropriate rate of speed. You can always throw your hazards on. People sell deer whistles that you attach to your car. They don't work. Don't fall into the gimmick. Don't buy them. And of course, always obey the speed limits and wear seat belts. Property damage, that's one of the main reasons that we're getting calls at our front office. In Bristol, as people are complaining about deer eating their ornamental plants, their gardens, their yard, in their yards. And then obviously the agriculture and horticulture world. So people have business, whether that be growing crop or some sort of ornamental plants. They're seeing impacts. And then, of course, we care about the forest and the herd health. As a deer biologist, someone who loves deer. I want to see deer being healthy through time and sustain themselves. So we want to make sure that they're sustaining themselves at a biological carrying capacity. That means they're at a level in which the deer can sustain themselves through time while being healthy. So if there's too many deer in the landscape, there's not going to be enough resources for them, and then their overall health of the deer will decline. And then with the forest, we want the consumption of native plants, seedlings and saplings not to be at an all time high. We need those. Those saplings and seedlings to regenerate, to have a native forest composition here. So if you have too many deer, they're going to then consume that plant. The beautiful plant up top is the lady slipper. I don't really see those anymore in most places in Rhode Island where there's too many deer, like here in Bristol. They'll also begin to impact the the ground layer. So a lot of ground nesting songbirds use low level vegetation to build nests. And if you look on that picture on the right, lower right, there's a deer exposure. So the plot on the right is. Place where deer cannot be because of a fence, and then the plot on the left is a place where deer can roam freely. So when you have too many deer in a certain area, there'll be no forest regeneration and no habitat that a suite of species need. And those healthy forests provide ecosystem services, whether that's clean water or clean air. And like I said, those other species can become impacted, and then you could have a loss of biodiversity. We always care about disease within deer. Too many deer and high densities is a sort of cesspool for diseases. If they do occur, they'll transmit very quickly. Diseases like chronic wasting disease doesn't currently exist here in Rhode Island, but if it does, and we had a high density. Exceeding the appropriate density, that disease could spread. And then again, starvation is a concern when we don't have enough forest habitat for deer. These are some of the birds that are dependent on a healthy understory. I won't go through the name, but you can look at the list here. They need that habitat that too many deer prevent from occurring. So it's important to think of, we're not managing just deer to reduce their densities. We're managing deer for the entire ecosystem, because too many deer have impacts that impact other species. So why is there an issue in Bristol opposed to these other places that being mentioned? There has been a reduced hunting pressure, this favorable habitat. So what a species like deer need or any species, they need food, water and shelter. And Bristol has all three with no issues, and there's a lack of predators. Like I said, no mountain lions, no wolves. And basically no hunters before this year. So this prior slot, well, this slide was mentioned before, and the last time I was here, talking about the management options. Legal regulated hunting, sharpshooting, fertility control, translocation and fencing. I'll get into all these a little bit more in depth, except for fencing, because fencing, everybody knows what a fence is. It's expensive. Some people don't like it, and it's not really appropriate at large scales. So legal regulated hunting, it's safe. We require hunter education for all of our hunters. Rhode Island has never documented a non-hunter safety accident, so the chance of someone being. On a public property or private property where hunting occurs, being injured is basically zero. It's never occurred in Rhode Island, especially with archery hunting. Hunting occurs on over seventy thousand acres in Rhode Island without safety incidents. And you're a lot more likely to be injured, eleven times more likely playing volleyball, and a hundred and five times more likely playing football. We tell all, we tell all of our hunters during the gun seasons and all of our non-hunting public to use safety orange during the hunting season. Just like you wear a safety belt, wear hunter orange. It's just a safe practice that we recommend people do to be safe. It's humane. Through a Rhode Island hunter, Rhode Island hunter survey, seven percent of deer hunters. Shot and did not recover a deer the prior season. There was a study out of Washington DC over thirty years. There was an eighty four percent success rate of hunters recovering their deer. With technological advances such as rainfinders, crossbows. The recovery rate continues to increase through time. We also allow dogs to recover deer, so if someone shoots a deer, they're struggling to find, they can use a dog to recover the deer. The dog is able to smell a lot better than a human can, so they're able to recover it that way. And it's a sustainable, acceptable use. It's publicly accepted. Over eighty percent of the public approves of hunting. And it's effective, economical, and most importantly, sustainable. Some of the issues with the other options I'll get into in later in the talk. It's you have this initial push of sharpshooting or birth control, but after so many years. Whoever's paying for it can't continue to pay for it, and they eventually pull the plug. We use hunting licenses to help match those federal dollars that manage wildlife. But more importantly, those were created early on in hunting to prevent over harvesting of certain species. Just like you need a driver's license to drive, you needed a hunting license to hunt. So we're using a wild local food source when our hunters are out there hunting. In this past year, we harvested thirty two thousand pounds of consumable venison, so that's about a hundred and thirty thousand meals. This isn't the first time there's been a cooperative program between towns or land trusts or any entity. To allow hunting on their property. It's happened nationally, and it's happened locally here in Rhode Island. Providence Water Supply, Westley Land Trust, Block Island, JL Current State Park, Beaver Tail State Park, and the Nature Conservancy properties. So this isn't a new thing, and it's been successful and safe. My mouth is very dry. Somebody turn the heat on in here or?
I think they just brought it down because I was. Feeling a bit.
Could feel it.
Yes.
You guys don't got like a heat thing on me, do you?
Not as far as you know.
So the Bristol Hunting Cooperative, this is the first year it went on. Something here so I can see. So we collaborated with the town council, the police department, the town planner, and our own enforcement division. So it's archery deer hunting only, September fifteenth through January thirty first. You need hunting licenses and deer permits. You need your hunter education, which is a requirement for your license, but you also need an archery proficiency certification course. Have to be two hundred feet away from all occupiable dwellings, so that's not just a house, that sheds, garages, anything that is occupiable. Legal hunting hours are thirty hours before sunrise to thirty minutes after sunset, so basically within daylight. It's common to see hunters during the dark going in or coming out of the woods, because they want to be in a stationary position ready before it gets light out. All other hunting regulations apply that apply in state land, and there's no liability incurred on the town if there's no charge cost. No charging for the hunters. We had signage, press releases and mailings out to property owners into the town. The signage we're going to improve upon this year, that sign right there, you see, that's a new sign that we just had made, so we're going to be posting the boundaries. This upcoming off season. These are the four properties that have been open to hunting. There's the Hopeworth property, Skater's Pond. Hundred Acre Woods and Mintern. If you have any questions about those specifically, we can address those later on. So what did the hunting season look like this year? We had sixty three as of January seventh, so that's almost ten days ago or eight days ago. And we had thirty seven of those occurring on the town property. So if you recall, last time I was here, I mentioned if we had a harvest of forty, I'd be impressed because that was a double of harvest. We basically tripled our harvest from last year and quadrupled our harvest from the five year average. Deer vehicle collisions were forty one this year, and that was a thirty one percent reduction from two thousand and twenty two, which was the year prior. We've had no general public or hunter injuries, and that's mandated by law to report. So here's what the harvest and the deer vehicle collisions look like side by side. So you can see as the population increases, your deer vehicle collisions and your hunter harvest will typically increase. In theory, the effort has been the same through time, same amount of motorists, same amount of hunters. Except for this year, for hunters, obviously, there was an increase in hunting this year. But vehicle collisions, we basically have the same amount of people on the road every year. So as that vehicle collision rate number goes up, it's reflective of what the population is doing and was going to continue to increase. So here's the two stacked side by side, and this is when you can see the first time that we've documented. That the hunter harvest surpasses the vehicle collision. What's going to happen is there's going to be an amount of deer that unfortunately die every year in Bristol. And they're either going to succumb from vehicle collisions, hunter mortality, disease or starvation. Now, most likely, it's going to be vehicle collisions or hunter harvest. So we have the choice to allow hunting and make sure that the deer that are being harvested are being used properly. So the deer is either going to get hit by a vehicle and die, and it could be a suffering death, or they could be harvested by a hunter. And then that's meat to use and consumed by the hunter and their family and friends. So some of the other options, we'll start with sharpshooting. It is effective, but it's very expensive. And like I said before, it almost always is followed up or paired with a hunting program due to the cost. It's hard to gain public. Access to properties because most sharpshooting is occurring with high powered rifles. And most of those are using suppressors, which likely wouldn't be allowed in Rhode Island, because I would have to go through the Attorney General's office. And it also usually follow with the closure of areas. So if that would occur on town land, you'd probably have to close the town land during that that timeframe. You can reduce costs by using town staff or other local staff, but that increases OT and reduces, you know, normal. Normal duties for those individuals. There's a high level of city planning. You have to have a capacity to handle that many deer, because it's usually. Pretty quick. There's a lot of deer that are going to be. Taken at once, so you have to have the ability to handle those. And like was mentioned before, one year off of any sort of reduction method is going to result in that bounce back effect. So that's the real, that's the main positive with hunting is it's persistent through time. Sharpshooting, fertility control, if you're ever unable to afford the expenses, that's when that bounce back will occur. In Ann Arbor, Michigan, there was a sterilization and sharpshooting project that was working, but in two thousand and twenty was cut due to budget constraints, because it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. They haven't restarted it. In Cuyahoga Heights in New York. Basically stated that the only way for the program to be successful was the capture and euthanasia of individuals. So they're necessarily not sharpshooting, but they're tranquilizing individuals and then euthanizing. So there's other non-lethal treatments, and this reduces the herd productivity. This isn't reducing the deer density or the amount of deer on the landscape. This is reducing the birth rate of individual deer, hopefully to zero. This doesn't. Reduce the, like I said, it delays the mortality and shifts it from one cause to another. So in places like this, your vehicle collisions are going to be your number one cause of mortality like we've seen in the past before the hunting was expanded. Starvation, this is harmed to the ecosystem health with the herbaceous and trouble layers that provide habitat for many other species. And obviously, we don't want to see deer starved to death. Predation, that's going to occur when deer are starving to death, hit by vehicles and may not have succumbed to those injuries. A predator is going to come and consume them alive, basically. And the same goes for disease. This requires live capture, handling, marking and some usually some form of invasment treatment. And then you lose that sustainable local wild meat. Most of the deer that are treated with some sort of birth control are not fit for human consumption. So those deer densities will remain high for some time, and so will those human deer conflicts. And the most important part is a lot of these issue or a lot of these options now are only practical in closed population. And what I mean by that is on the next or one of the future slides is. If you have a population, what happens is you have to treat ninety percent or more of the females. And if you don't have a closed population like an island where deer can't come and go as they please. Deer will immigrate into a certain area and then reduce the percentage of those that have been vaccinated or treated with birth control. So you need to. Administer the birth control, whatever fertility control that looks like, to ninety percent of does. When the deer are able to immigrate into the town, in this case, that reduces the effectiveness. So some of the options for fertility control are gonocan, and that basically is only used for adult females. And it's got a seventy percent of efficacy rate. There's also PZP. It's more effective, but one of the things that is a downside of it is it doesn't prevent the female from coming into heat repeatedly. So she's not going to be able to become pregnant, but she's going to come into heat thirty days or twenty eight days later. And then another twenty eight days. And what the problem with that is that increases and attracts more males to where she's living. Because she's giving off the signal that, hey, I'm still viable to breed and reproduce, but she's not being bred, so she continues to come in heat. And then sterilization like tubal ligation, your types, your tubes being tied, the same instance occurs. You're not able to become pregnant, but you're still giving off the impression to other deer that you're in heat, and then you're going to increase the. The rate at which males are looking for females. So the considerations, you need to treat that large enough part, a large enough proportion of the population over ninety percent. You have to have access to those deer, and you have to be able to approach those deer. You need to be able to administer and deliver whatever that fertility control is. It's a long term effort. It's really a commitment that you're going to do this in. It's a long-term effort, it's really a commitment that you're going to do this in perpetuity, whatever the cost is. Um, it's prohibitive, cost-wise, large scale and long-term. And a lot of programs will start this way, but eventually always turn to a lethal solution. And again, it's always looking at a closed population when it can be effective. And you can see here on the right, think of Bristol as this main source of um deer. But all these other places are deer coming and going, so that might be Warren, could be Swansea, Tuiset. They swim across from Prudence or Hope Island, uh, not Hope, the other island, but there's. You have that immigration and emigration where it's, it's really just not effective. So in a Missouri sterilization project, the town abandoned the project at the cost of thirteen hundred dollars per doe and they now call the deer. Cornell, um, they had an archery hunting and sterilization project. And after five years, you've, even though the birth rate decreased, um, the number of deer on campus remained the same. The use of gonokon alone resulted in a twenty-nine percent increase in the deer population. And then in Angel Island, California, the use of a sterilization project was abandoned. Um, only with fifteen does receiving treatment just because of how hard it was to um sterilize all the deer. Here's some more stats for some other people in the deer fertility um world. Uh, neither technique talking about fertility control has proven effective at achieving desired deer population reductions. In an island that closed population or fenced deer population, let alone a wild free uh free-ranging deer population that we have here in Bristol. Um, another issue is those deer, the cost per deer to treat. So it can cost around a thousand dollars per deer for that first eighty percent. But that next ten to fifteen percent that you need to capture are increasingly difficult because they've kind of figured out what's going on. And avoid capture, so that's when that crawl, the cost can really increase upwards to three thousand dollars per deer. Um, and despite their efforts over seven years, they've yet to uh record achievable impacts. Another one from White Buffalo that. You need to get ninety percent of females in the local deer herd to be sterilized into the population to have reduction. Without that, lethal methods need to be used. Um, here in Bristol, without it being a closed population, the ability to get ninety percent of the females um treated is very unlikely. Then there's translocation. We don't want deer here in Bristol, so we're going to capture them and then we're going to move them to Barrowville. Unfortunately, there's low survival rates. So due to the stress induced um during capture and transport, mortality can occur during that process. But more likely it's going to occur afterwards, these deer have just gone through this very stressful. Um, process, they're moved to a new location and often they succumb um to the stress that way. More importantly, the this is the the disease risk and parasite transmission. We don't allow relocation of wildlife in Rhode Island because it pro uh um. It permits um the moving of diseases. So if in this case deer, if that deer were to have chronic wasting disease and we moved it to Barrowville. We've now just infected all the deer in Barrowville and so on, so that's really why we don't allow the transport of any wildlife. There are exceptions to the rules, but generally speaking, we do not promote moving wildlife. And here's some more statistics on translocation. In California, by the end of uh the year, twenty-three of twenty-seven died. Um, only two to be concerned, uh, two to be living out of twenty-nine. In Angel Island in nineteen ninety-five, out of two hundred and fifteen captured, only two survived the entire year. In Wisconsin, three hundred and ten deer are translocated and fifty fifty-four percent died within the first year. Missouri had a thirty percent mortality rate and in New Mexico, survival was fifty percent again. Um, so you have real low um survival rates when you're moving deer, other than it just being bad for wildlife, it's bad for the individual deer. So in summary, deer are overabundant. We need to reduce them to fall below cultural and biological carrying capacity for the reasons I stated before. And doing nothing means favoring deer over many other species, local forests or native plants. So human intervention intervention is needed to restore a balance in the best management in this case. Is deer hunting through legal uh regulated hunting and with that I'll take questions.
Thank you, um, Dylan and Dennis and Sharon and Warren um for your comments. Um, Dylan, I just had a question in regards to uh Dennis's comment that the population would control itself. Um, if we had no hunting and that those females would not re. They would not be want to reproduce due to the overpopulation, is that it's your?
So, excuse me, in a perfect world, deer are living in a forest on their own with no human. You know, parking lots, Colt State Park, Hopeworth or private properties. What happens is deer live on a landscape. If there's too many, the forest habitat will prevent the regeneration of the population to bounce back. Here in Bristol, the forests have been, I don't want to use the word decimated, but they're not what they should be to be healthy and sustainable. The problem is in Bristol, there's so many non-wild factors, basically peoples, plants, gardens. Agriculture, it artificially inflates the capacity that the land can withhold or can hold. So what happens is, right now deer are continuing to breed at a high rate and produce multiple fawns. Because of a resource that we as the public are putting out for deer. So abrevieties, rose bushes, gardens, stuff like that. So if that wasn't the case, the deer would in fact maintain themselves. At an appropriate po- population, but because we've artificially inflated the resource that they have. They just continue to increase, now at some point they are going to hit a level where they're going to begin to fall. But that's going to be when deer vehicle collisions are so high that we're not going to like, it just wouldn't, we wouldn't let it get that way because it's been. It would be out of hand and that's when the deer vehicle collision rates are really why we're looking at and like this is an issue here in Bristol. One of the highest in the state per square mile, so we've know we've already reached that threshold publicly. That this isn't something that we want to see continue.
Thank you. Thank thanks Dylan again for your presentation. Um, can you put it back on the slide or maybe you can't do it anymore that you don't have your computer there, but. There were the locations where um the deer were being harvested. We had um Hundred Acre Woods with twelve, Hopeworth with thirteen, Mintern with ten, there are two other ones in single digits.
Yes.
Um, like based on like numbers like that, where we're kind of seeing like more deer being harvested in one area versus another. Um, is there like, would there ever in the future be like a recommendation where? You know, if there's just fewer deer being harvested in one area that maybe. We decide not to have hunting in that area anymore and just focus on the others or would that cause? Um, a um, would that cause more hunters to maybe? Uh, go in the areas where there's more deer, right? So you have way too many hunters now in an area if we're if we're doing that, what are, what's your quick twitch on that?
Yeah, so let me summarize your question just so I don't miss it. Basically, we see harvest increase in these certain areas. Do we ever pull back those hunting areas because harvest went low? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, like as a specialist in this area, as an expert, I mean, if you if you're seeing numbers like that. You know, and you had to evaluate like a hunting program and say, you know, here's some recommendations for some changes that. We would maybe have you make, would that be something where we would say something along the lines of? I mean, it's just not really moving the needle much at Skater's Pond or Veterans Home. But at the same time, I recognize that there might be some unintended consequences of doing something like that.
Gotcha, perfect, understand. So yeah, so this is the first year the the hunting season with these town properties. So the three that had the highest harvest are likely because they're the biggest and they have the the most room for hunters to sort of get away from other hunters. Um, so that's why we see a high harvest. If we were to close, let's say, Skater's Pond for hunting in the future. There would be no hunting pressure there and then deer and from the nearby areas would find refuge on that property. And then that population specifically in that small pocket would then increase and then become like a source population for the rest of the of the town. So we wouldn't want to close properties because there's not too many deer there this year, that means the hunting is working. But like with all of the the methods, once you take your foot off the gas, that's when the population can bounce back.
You had also talked a little bit, I reviewed the last few meetings that we had when you came here before before this one and. Um, you had talked a little bit about if like this program isn't working and it. Like based on the numbers that I'm seeing right here, it it seems to be moving the needle uh a little bit and. I'm not saying that it's unequivocal, right? I think another year of data might be good to actually make a determination of whether or not uh this this program is working. But but yeah, that's um, yeah, um, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is great, sixty-three, we were at twenty-four last year. And then before that, we were in the the teens every year. I mean, tripling and quadrupling the harvest to me was, it kind of blew me away, I thought we were going to be in that forty range. Um, so we're going to see this huge spike this year, we've really hammered the deer population. And we're going to, my suspicion is we're going to see a reduction in harvest next year because we did such a good job harvesting deer. So then that's when you're going to see this new sort of balance with hunting going on. Of where the deer population is going to remain stable through time with no other changes. Like let's say no other properties become open, no properties close. You know, the new norm is probably going to be somewhere in the future, once it sort of stables out.
And and uh another point that I wanted to make that was related to that was that in the prior meetings you had talked about maybe. Uh, working with private landowners to maybe increase some of the hunting in in those areas.
Yeah, for sure.
What did, what did he mean by that? Is is that, what does that look like when when you do that?
Yeah, so just like I'm here with the town council, I could meet with a bunch of property owners, whether they have a large parcel, which is ideal. Or if there's multiple small parcel owners who agree that, hey, we own fifty acres of land, we should allow hunting here. Um, to reduce the impacts that we're seeing. It's hard in Rhode Island because you need written permission to hunt in private property. And most of Rhode Island, as I'm sure you know, is mostly small, very small parcels, especially here in Bristol. So what I think of immediately is Papa Squash Point, so they're sort of the next. Um, place where hunting should occur and I hope to see occur, that and Colt State Park. So when I'm here and I'm seeing this data, I'm saying, look, we're having great success at this town level on these town properties. How can we expand to continue to improve our success, that way the program as a whole um succeeds?
Yeah, and I just wanted to make one last point here, uh, so I can allow my colleagues to have a little bit of time, but. Um, I I hate to admit this, but one of these uh, uh, one of these vehicle hits was mine and uh. So um, just uh, I'll give you a little bit of insight about that in December, we were on our way to hockey. In the morning, we, I had some precious cargo. In a white Honda Pilot right out there, if you want to see what it looks like. When a deer hits a Honda Pilot, you can look at that white Honda Pilot out there. Um, and it was, I I've been in deer collisions before, I'm from a part of the country where we have a lot of that kind of stuff, but. It it's a little bit different when you have three kids in the car. I tell you that because uh there gets to be a lot of questions from them. And uh, then you think a little bit too of, you know, the fact that, you know, maybe. You know, if somebody has a deer coming at them, maybe they swerve and go into oncoming traffic and and things like that, so. It it is a little bit nerve-wracking to to think about that. Uh, and uh, it it hit home here is is I guess what I'm I'm trying to say. Uh, it is nice to see the thirty percent reduction uh since last year. Uh, in these numbers and I I was not expecting. Uh, that much of a decrease in the number of deer collisions and so I was very surprised when I received this data. And uh, it definitely shows that things might be moving in the right direction. Um, but again, I think that it'll be beneficial for us to at least have one more year to make sure that it's continuing to. Go in that other direction as well.
Yeah, vehicle collisions are my number one concern, you know, as much as I love deer, I manage deer, I want to see deer thrive as a whole. I'm more concerned about exactly what you said, someone sees a deer, they swerve and then who knows what happens. So that, that's the main driver for the public safety aspect is the vehicle collisions. Um, and yeah, seeing the harvest go up like it did this year and the uh vehicle collisions go down was was uh music to my ears. Yes.
Um, I think on the number on the chart that you just had, there were twenty-three in private property. Approximately, how many, I forgot, can you remind us how many private properties we have in town that allow hunting?
That I do not know, so that's kind of on a personal um basis. Anybody could decide to allow hunting on their property. Um, you just need the legal requirements, so you'd have to be two hundred feet away from an occupiable dwelling. And then in all likelihood, some so some form of deer habitat, whether that's a field, forest, early succession habitat. Something that promotes deer being there.
So how did you get, how do you get the numbers from that?
I see your question, so hunters who are out in the field, they harvest their deer, they have to report to the Division of Fish and Wildlife. Hey, I shot a deer, I shot it on public property or state property, uh, public property or private property. So they don't tell me where on a map they shot their deer, generally speaking. Um, so those private harvest occur within the town in an unknown location.
So are you able to find out how how many, you you must know roughly somewhere, somebody at the EM must know. Where the private locations are.
Nope, so when that hunter reports their harvest, they have the option to say public or private. And when they select public, they're going to given a dropdown of all the public properties within the state. And that's when I see some of these properties. If they're harvesting it on private land, all they do is say private. And that's as far as it goes, like we don't ask for an address of where the harvest occurs. In theory, we could ask our hunters to be like, hey, do you mind telling me where you shot your deer? And some of them I oblige, but some may not because some people are sensitive about that information. Um, so we don't know where those deer are harvested within the town.
Just then just tell like people that they know are hunters, like you can come on my property at certain times.
Yeah, that would generally how it will occur, hunters are out there looking for places to go because Rhode Island is a small, highly dense, highly populated state. Um, so we do have, you know, seventy thousand acres of public property that's um open for hunting. But we have a lot of hunters, we have over five thousand deer hunters in the state, so they're always looking for places to go where there's a lot of deer and Bristol is one of those places.
You know, when uh Mary's asking about private, I know of two private uh areas, you know, and I'm. You're right to the point, I mean, they would not want to disclose where it is, especially with everything else that's going on. You know, they would not be wanting to be the neighbor and say, hey, you know, what are you doing? Um, so I agreed, but I'm, I know a couple of properties in town that they've done that to control because of uh. You know, the uh, what they, you know, for various reasons.
Yeah, and most of our harvest within the state occurs on private property, I think it's seventy-five percent of our harvest, so. Like the gentleman before said, we're harvesting around two thousand or a little bit more deer per year on. Uh, in Rhode Island and seventy-five percent of that is occurring on private property. In Bristol, we have the opposite occur, the majority of our harvest occurred on town property, this cooperative property. But that's mainly um reflective of there's really nowhere else to go. So these are the places where deer live and these are the only places where somebody could hunt, so that's why we saw such an increase in harvest this year. It's because there were so many deer on these specific properties.
Um, Dylan and and Chief, I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about the hunters and in Bristol and this past. This past season, how we, I I haven't really heard of any major issues or anything that's come really to the council. Uh, Chief, um, as far as the hunters and their practices of harvesting and. And Dylan, just for clarification on the harvest, that means, you know, I look at hunting because I'm not a hunter. Um, one, there's trophy hunting and there's two, there's there's hunting for sustainability and food. So when you use the word harvest, that is really they're hunting for sustainability and food and we're using that. The venison for meat and consumption, is that correct?
Yeah, I would say uh probably zero percent of our hunters are hunting for a trophy. That might be something else that they view it as, but most people are hunting for food or for a recreational activity. Um, majority of our hunters are hunting for food in Rhode Island. Um, the fact that they shoot a male that has big antlers, that's a trophy to them, but that's not the reason why they went out.
Uh, Chief, I was just wondering if you could comment on this last one as far as hu- the hunters and and. I mean, as far as have there any major issues?
When the collaborative uh was signed, the town administrator had made it clear to my office that he wanted the police department. Uh, to have their eyes and ears out in the community, uh, he wanted to make sure that the practice was safe uh for our residents. And I took that um task very seriously, in the back of the room is Lieutenant Steven St Pierre. Each week, I tasked Lieutenant St Pierre with meeting with the supervisors and the officers. In collecting all of the data relative to service calls, uh, any issues of public safety that we had. Were any concerns that would be important to the administrator's office. And I can tell after twelve week, twelve weeks of reporting, we did not find a public safety hazard. To the residents uh of the town of Bristol, there was no accidents, there was no. Uh, deer running at large that had been injured uh as a result of any hunting things. We did have some calls of service, um, related to folks that were uh, upset about the hunting that was going on, and we notified D E M. And D E M, uh, did take, uh, action against some residents who were displeased, uh, with the process. Um, and, but I can, uh, we took the, uh, we took the call, uh, from the administrator and the council very seriously. We put strong eyes and ears on it to make sure that it was safe, uh, for the residents. Uh, I'm a non-hunter, um, but I can tell you that, um, we did not see any, uh, public safety, uh, issues as a result of your decisions.
And then, um, I'll just let Adam, Adam Hill, our lieutenant. Can't believe I got that right. I'll let him speak on, um, safety concerns, just briefly, um, as one of the main officers, uh, here in Rhode Island.
Hi, good evening, uh, Lieutenant Adam Hill. I'm a field lieutenant for the, uh, Upland Unit and, uh, D E M Divisional Law Enforcement. Uh, when we began this process last year, I came to a couple of meetings with Dylan. Uh, once it was implemented, I made sure our, our Upland officers were made aware. I, I got the message out to them to increase patrols in, in the areas, to be present in case Bristol PD required assistance. In case there are any calls for complaints. Uh, over the course of this hunting season, uh, we, uh, were in, uh, checking these areas about one hundred times. Officers put themselves out checking particular, uh, locations or, or Bristol properties. Um, of those approximately one hundred, I think of, uh, we documented a dozen violations, hunting violations, which would include, uh, no uh, deer tags, which is required, so you can tag a deer after it's harvested. Proficiency, uh, archery proficiency. So I think there were two, two or three violations, uh, those, those hunters were just not fully aware. The corrective action was taken. Or they were directed to hunt at the Veterans Home Property where proficiency is not required. Um, I think there were a couple, couple of calls for improperly uh, disposed deer carcasses, um, which, you know, as unfortunate as that is, not all, you know, hunters, we can expect to be, uh, ethical. Ninety-eight percent of my interactions with hunters have all been positive. There's, there's always going to be lawbreakers, which keeps us in our line of work. There were also calls for service, as the chief is aware, for hunter harassment. We responded out and addressed those, uh, as they came in. Uh, the hunters in those instances were not necessarily uh, interested in pursuing charges that would require a witness statement tha- then us charging those individuals. And, um, it's a mandatory court appearance at the Rhode Island Traffic Tribunal. The hunter would then have to show up, testify. You know, I think for the most part, the hunter wanted the individuals educated and to allow them to continue the hunt. They're legal, they have their license, the property is open. Um, so we just want to, uh, make sure that, you know, we understand that people don't like it. We understand that people are against it. It's when you step in and intentionally disrupt someone's uh, behavior or someone's activity, and they're legally within their right to do so. Uh, that's when we have to step in and take action. And with some education and some conversation, we were able to um, resolve those instances without, uh, further issues. So for the most part, we had, you know, safe, it was definitely safe, no hunting, safety-related issues. Um, and with the other violations, it's not unlike anything you would see statewide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Dylan, besides, uh, preserving open space for these animals that, it beautiful animals in my, my eyes, um, they don't have anywhere to go, obviously. We're, we have a finite amount of property for them to, to roam. Um, do, do you see peaks and valley in the hunting process? In the hu- hunting seasons, like, I mean, we are, we're gonna just explain there'll be another spike. But eventually, we will get to a balanced, a balanced population where we won't need to hunt every year.
I would say, um, I wouldn't, no, I wouldn't say that. I would say, I would anticipate hunting to be here every year. Because when you don't have that happen, you're gonna have the population rebound. In theory, you could say, okay, we're gonna hunt twenty-twenty-three, take twenty-twenty-four off, hunt twenty-twenty-five. Take twenty-twenty-six off, you could, in theory, do something like that as a town, you could make that decision. What happens is, is you're not gonna be able to basically effectively manage deer through time. And you're never gonna get to that capacity, that carrying capacity that we should be at, um, when hunting, uh, harvest, um, does occur.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just, um, I'm sorry, just don't know if I just dropped my train of thought, but it is on the length of the season. You know, from, I think it was September to, uh, the end of January, if I'm correct? Does it need to be that long? It se- just seems like a very long time today.
Yeah, so the main thought behind a lengthy season is we want to make sure hunters have enough time to get out. Most hunters aren't able to hunt Monday through Friday, so they're only able to hunt Saturday and Sunday. And then kids, soccer, football, that Saturday's taken up or that Sunday's taken up. So they really only get one or two days to hunt per week. And then let's say it rains on a Saturday and you can't get out that way. So when we lengthen the season, we increase the opportunity that somebody can go out and potentially harvest the deer. So if we were to shrink that to, let's say, October to December, um, the chance of hunters harvesting the deer decreases. And then we wouldn't have as much success in our deer harvest.
Because when you have the, um, amount of rain, for example, and, and bad weather that we've had, like, say, this month of, of January. And to a large degree in December. I mean, does it really, does it really make that much of a difference? Like, I, to me, it just seems like a very long season. That was the only thing, like, if I was, if we were going back to negotiate this for the future, I mean, that was something that comes to my mind. And the other is, you know, the access points to these, uh, places. You know, where, where you can, can you, like, limit it so that they're not, like, right by people's homes and that type of thing? Because, I mean, I can see, you know, like, can we, like, make sure that we can find parking somewhere else? Because I can see where people are like, oh, you know, I had to explain, explain to my child why they're dragging out the deer. Oh, that type of thing. And that wouldn't happen if they were more, I mean, they may be, it may always happen, but it may not happen if it's not on a narrow street parked there.
Yeah, so the, the hunting season question first. Um, if the town decided to reduce that, uh, length, that's something they could do. It's something I wouldn't recommend, but that's something that you guys could decide on. Um, I would advocate against that and keeping it with the full season. Um, I always advocate in the beginning to have a very simple, in facts of, like, rules and regulations. The minute properties become different from what our state regulations look like, they start saying, this is too complicated, I'm not gonna bother hunting there. And then again, you have that reduced reduction harvest because the regulations are too complex.
So you're saying like that September to, um, January is what the Rhode Island season is?
Yes, yeah, so if we went and did something specifically different on these properties, hunters may start reading the regulations and be like, this is getting a little too complicated. I'm just gonna go somewhere else. That's a possibility, and one of the reasons why I would also advocate against it. Um, in terms of parking locations, um, I did do some site visits for all the properties with the town manager and the town planner to identify these. Bristol is an urban area. There's probably, I don't know how many of these properties have actual access where there's not a dwelling nearby. So if you know, at least provide some access to these properties, you know, they couldn't be used. So I think it's unfortunate that there is that conflict that could occur. Um, but hopefully, after that first conflict does arise, that homeowner probably is still gonna be there the following years. And they now know what's going on, they've been educated, and now they're sort of used to what's going on. It's just like, if you don't want to see it, you don't have to look, you don't have to go out and confront somebody. You know it's occurring, you see the headlight coming out of the woods in the dark. Don't go over there because you know what's going on, you know what you're gonna see. Don't upset yourself or the hunter.
But I mean, is there a plan to mitigate as much as possible?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd be happy to work with the town to, we could reevaluate the access locations. But it's gonna be cha- like, it'd be challenging to allow access to the, all of the properties that, um, have no inner, that are not near a dwelling. It's just not in the nature of, like, Bristol or Rhode Island.
I'm thinking like Elmwood Drive, you know, like, people, I, I haven't seen it, but people have said that they were hunting right there, you know, various times that you've been here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not a very wide road, and, uh, that property has other access points. That's, that's one, that's in my, my head, for example.
Yeah, for sure. So we looked at these properties and One Hundred Acre Woods is one hundred acres, it's a large parcel. So if we reduce the access to, let's say, San Francisco Ave or Justin Street, I think it's Justin. Um, to those, it'd be very difficult for hunters to access the other ends of the properties. So the more, um, access points you allow, the higher your success will be. So if you reduce access points, you can expect to reduce then, uh, reduction in harvest. So it's a give and a take. Um, and that's something the town council is, you know, able to think about on their own and decide on parking and access. Um, and I'd be happy to continue to work with you guys to fine tune those. So, yeah.
Any other questions from the council? No? Anything else to be done?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. On a safe season.
Thank you. It's still on through the end of this month.
Correct.
Right.
Okay. So council, what's in front of us? Excuse me, uh, is a request to enact a proposal, well, to enact an ordinance prohibiting deer hunting from the town, on the town properties. I don't have to go through it, we've heard what those properties are. What's this council's budget?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we, um, deny.
I'll second.
There's a motion, uh, motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, to deny discussion?
Yes, um, you know, lots of facts were presented, but we can look at the glass when it's half full, is it half full or is it half empty? So we can disagree to, or agreed to disagreed. Um, but I think there's a need for what we're doing right now. Um, I'm very familiar with, I haven't had, there's accidents, but I've run very close. Uh, I live in the downtown area and I've been dealing with deer going across the street on Wood Street. Right by the, by the ten yard brook, when I'm coming in at night, you know, into town, I run into them constantly. And it's not one, it's five at a time, most of the time. You know, so, I mean, this, these are areas that I've never seen. Actually, I happen to have one that actually was in my yard that was being chased by the police. This was not recently, uh, was a couple of years ago. I live on Carter Street, you know, of all places. Um, so I've seen this, an increase, and it's becoming an issue. I know when I sit on, on Steve's seat, uh, I know the folks on Ferry Road constantly come in and complain. They're looking out their kitchen window in the morning for a cup of coffee, and what are they looking at? Five, six, seven deer in their backyard. You know, so I think we have a responsibility to work with our residents, you know, for the safety of all.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Tony, I'll, I'll chime in since I seconded the motion. And again, I'll just reiterate that, um, I'm, I'm looking at the data right here, and I'm, I'm seeing the thirty percent reduction. And while I understand that we have a limited amount of data right here, and we have limited data points, that I, I think that there is some value in what we're seeing so far, uh, in this program with that thirty percent reduction. And that, uh, it might behoove us to, um, consider at least collecting another year or two of data to see if we can continue to get those numbers to decrease. I think that there are some real, uh, public safety issues that are involved with this. I'm gonna set aside the whole, uh, Lyme's disease stuff, but I'm gonna say that I do think that there's some real public safety issues involved with this, with the auto collisions and everything like that. And, uh, certainly, if we can continue to get those numbers to adjust downward, um, then I think that, um, Bristol will be a, Bristol will be a safer place.
I, I would think that, you know, the safety of the deer population too. I mean, to have, like, reasonable amount of land and food and other things. I mean, nobody really wants to see hunting everywhere, but as you said, Tony, this summer, I think summer or early fall, there was a deer in my yard. I live on High Street around the corner. Um, and I was, like, shocked when I saw that, I have to say. Um, but I think, you know, hunting has always been a way to manage, um, these, these animals, animal herds. And I think that we probably should continue for another year, ju- at least a year, just to see how those, those numbers make a difference. And I would be curious at some point to find out, um, you know, when we were talking about the issue in South Kingstown, for example, when Mr. Tabelle was talking about that, like, how much open space and open land is there in South Kingstown versus Bristol versus Black Island? Because I would think that would make a difference as well as the number of deer that we, that each of these communities have. Um, but for us to have such a densely populated community with all these uh, open spaces with deer running across the street all the time. I mean, it is kind of, it is dangerous, it is scary. Um, so, that's my thoughts for the moment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can just add something in as well, I, um, I almost, I just want to make sure it gets on the record, but, uh, again, I was watching the last, uh, couple of meetings where this issue popped up. And, uh, I know Dylan, uh, I had asked you at one of the meetings if, uh, we would have a report uh, at the end of the hunting season. And, and I, I know that D E M is an agency with limited resources and, and everything like that. So I know that sometimes when we ask for things like that, it's, uh, it's a lot more ma- uh, man and woman power than, uh, than it is, um, than usually people think. But, um, but certainly, uh, I mean, this is a great start, right? But you had some other great stuff up there too, I think, that we'll be able to compare year to year. So, for instance, I'd be really interested in seeing, you know, what some of those other, what those private land numbers are gonna be looking like next year, and whether we see any growth in those uh, two town-owned properties where we, uh, we have harvest in single digits.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, um, I'd like to thank all the folks who testified this evening. It's, you know, educate us and some ends, and it's important, the information that you provide. Uh, and also to D E M for all your efforts on behalf of our state.
So I was very quiet, just take a moment and say, I live this way, in Bristol, right near Roger Williams. And we have deer in our yard all the time. Previous owners must have picked perfect plants because they don't typically eat, um, in our yard. They like our neighbor's yard, um, and they're beautiful creatures. Um, they really truly are. Um, I don't hear anyone here on the council advocating for hunting. What I hear is advocating for all the things that already been stated, controlling the deer population. Um, and I, I heard two sides of, in regards to Lyme disease. I'm gonna take a moment, and I have a family member who has Lyme disease. If you know anybody who's had Lyme disease, my God, what a horrible thing. And it is not just deer, as has already been pointed out, there are other animals that can bring Lyme disease. Um, but from the research that I did, uh, deer is a strong carrier of it. That is not the only reason. You heard from all of my colleagues, um, and, well, D E M gave its report, but you heard from my colleagues and I that we took this very seriously. We did a lot of research, there were multiple meetings. None of what we do happens in a back room or without advertising. And typically, it's advertised if it's a regular, sorry, it's on TV if it's a regular meeting. There was a lot of efforts that were made, as with anything, it wasn't just this, it's all that we do. So there was a lot of efforts that were done beforehand. We actually pushed off our decision for, if I recall, it was a year because it was in front of us and we wanted to have more discussions about it. So know that there was a lot of effort, it may be in disagreement, I understand. But know that this was not done very quickly, this was not done without what we believe was a lot of research. And we have a lot of faith in, um, what, the information that was presented in front of us. I will echo Tony's words, thank you for, uh, all that signed the petition that came in front of the council to speak on it. And I often get to say this more than people believe, but thank you for the mannerisms in this room too. Sometimes, uh, people have an emotional attachment to a particular subject, and it can go up. It did not, and I commend all of you for the way you handled yourself, so. Uh, and this council appreciates it. So without any other discussion, no other discussion? So, uh, motion made by Tony, seconded by Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, the next item on the agenda is I three, and this is the director from Parks and Recreation, uh, Rosenhausen. And this is a request from Rhode Island, uh, I'm sorry, Roger Williams University students for the beach entry building replacement. And there is, uh, for the record, there is a presentation that was submitted, um, that you have as received at meeting.
Yes. Tim, did you want to speak to this?
Sure, sure, just, uh,
Sure, sure. Just a, just to preface the quick presentation here that they have. So this fall, we had three students from Roger Williams come walking into the community center. And they, they'll talk a little bit about the club and what they're involved in at Roger Williams, and they were looking for a project to do. Some of the projects that they had told us that this club had done in the past were some kiosk work, some locations for bike racks. So they said, do you have any ideas of something we can work on? And this is kind of not a large scope project. So Warren and I kind of brainstormed and came together with a list. We presented them with, I think, three ideas. The one that stuck out to us most was the the booth when you're entering the beach down at the town, the town beach and sports complex. So that is a shed that's actually been there for quite a while and it is starting to show its age. We had to have Public Works help us reset it on the blocks that it's on, and there's a lot of rot happening at the bottom. So we showed them the area. We we told them we were looking to maybe come up with something that would better the operation that's there. If you've been down there, which I know you have, you'll see Donna, who's quite memorable, working at the booth, tends to be working in the street. Which we have concerns with. And also trying to keep the sun off her in the summertime, we're constantly going through 10 by 10 pop-up tents. So we kind of told them about the area we had, the challenges we had and what we were looking for. And they worked together with their classmates and some advisors and put together a nice idea for us. And we'd like to have him share it with you. I have Dominic Cavalo and Ryan DeSantis with me today.
I'll go and start. My name's Dominic Cavalo. I'm going to try and keep it short and sweet just because me and my grandmother, we're not fortunate enough to be Bristol residents. We have to make the track back to Connecticut after this, so. Not only I have to make her bedtime, I also have to make mine too, which is crazy to say for a college student.
We have citations for special. I think you deserve one, so.
So the presentation that I'm going to show is what me and my team so far that we've came up with these past couple of months. And you can go to the next slide if you want. That's a quick little peek at the structure. So this is my team right here. It's consisting of four college students right now, one being a grad student. And everyone else kind of fluctuates between grades. And we also have some mentors that are licensed architects as well as licensed contractors that kind of oversee our operation and make sure we're doing everything right and not like, you know, all over the place. So I'll go ahead and have Ryan talk about kind of what our organization's about and kind of like our goals that we want to instill. All right. So hi, everyone. First, I wanted to thank the council and the people of Bristol for your time. I know it is late, definitely past my bedtime. I'm currently a grad student at Roger Williams and I'm here representing the architecture program as the vice president of AIS. So AIS is the American Institute of Architecture Students. It it's a national student-led organization that aims at advancing leadership to design and service among architecture students outside of the classroom. And I also, as Dom mentioned, represent Freedom by Design as project manager, which is again, part of our chapter's AIS program. And Freedom by Design fosters students to get real-world architectural experience while at the same time allows us to serve the communities around us. And looking at the project itself and throughout the design process, we've, of course, been working with multiple parties. So one being fellow students, we've worked through numerous design shreds, having this kind of the sketching and brainstorming events as well as designing as our team that was shown. As well as working with our consultants of architects and contractors. And we've also had numerous meetings with our good friends from the Parks and Rec Department basing the the design off of their concerns and needs. So that's basically where the project has led us today. So going into the design, when we were first introduced to it, Tim mentioned some key factors that he wanted to incorporate into the the new structure that we're going to be building as well as designing. So some key things he wanted us to do was to establish a larger footprint for storage, especially for Donna, one of the workers there. As well as creating an aesthetic feature with contextualizing the structure within the site. Making it very naturalistic as it's in the park. If you want, you can go slide down, kind of showing. So that's one of the renders that we kind of made of the structure that we're at right now. Granted, we're still in the designing phase. We're not really into the finalized construction documents. As the whole point of tonight was to come to you guys and get your feedback on it and if any implementations needed to happen. So and another thing that we wanted to incorporate was bilingual signage. I know Tim touched on that very heavily, especially because the population that's coming into the town beach and sports complex is coming from Fall River or Providence, and it's a heavy Hispanic and Latino population. So establishing the opportunity to have that for them coming in instead of creating more of a traffic jam of, you know, doing this and whatnot, explaining about the park and its rules. And another thing was also making a better distinguish between the town beach complex as well as Cold State Park. Considering it's like pretty much neighboring it, creating that distinguished, strong distinguished between the two is also very important. So can you go back up a slide? So kind of going into the design, we wanted to make sure the context was deeply connected with the history of Bristol. So taking that in, we used a more curvature approach to the the structure to resemble the ship making features that Bristol incorporates. And then also incorporating a sailcloth within the structure to highlight that as well. And then also incorporating some lateral slats, 16 of which are cut off. And then 18 go up from the floor to the roof, representing 1680 when Bristol was founded. And then the storage area kind of has like a pop-up door to allow easy access from the worker and the cash box that's being held inside the storage area. If you can go down a slide or two. So this is kind of some more drawings of the structure itself. You can see the sailcloth as well as those vertical slot elements. And what we wanted to also focus on was benefits for the worker. It could either be safety factors of pulling them off the road and putting them on that median to allow for safer conditions with traffic. And we also incorporate some what's the word? Sorry, I'm only a student, so I'm trying to still learn these words. Perforated panels behind the worker to allow fresh air to pass through, especially in those really hot days. Sitting out in the sun really does stink. And also some shading with that sailcloth for the worker as well. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Being that we go back to school next week, kind of like the next steps are ordering materials, finalizing the designs and whatnot. And then we're planning on starting construction, hopefully, early February and finishing in time for Memorial Day when the structure and the park will open for ticket sales.
What is the material?
So right now, the material is like kind of up in the air. We haven't really finalized it yet just because of our budget and whatnot. But as of right now, we're sticking with more wood and a natural material to kind of fit with the context of the site.
And it would do well in a in the wind.
Yeah, so if it is treated correctly with certain stains and paint and whatnot. It could last potentially five or 10 years, depending on how it's treated and maintained as well. So I think it's I think it's 160. Unfortunately, the person who is like the key designer, he's in Italy right now abroad, so. But I'm pretty sure it's 160 square feet, I believe. So it's a little bit bigger than the pre-existing shed, so it'll allow for easier access for the workers and more storage as well for safety cones and pop-up tents if needed and whatnot.
Would would you be considering, because you mentioned, okay, the cash box inside and so forth. However, it gets pretty busy there sometimes back up. So is there a possibility of having a window there where the cash box can be accessed rather than have to go in every single time?
Yeah, so kind of like the idea of, from what we were approached with, with the pre-existing structure is that vandalization was a big worry for us. So if we did incorporate a window, it's a matter of fact of how it's going to close. And if it's like, I mean, I don't want it to happen, but if someone wants to rip it off and whatnot. So creating, oh, sorry.
No, if I may, no, I understand what you're saying and I probably was not very clear. But if you were to do a kind, not a window, a glass window, by the way, no, I would not propose that. I would say that if you put a cut in there so that the section can open of its own, then closes. So it's not, you can even tell that, you know, there is an opening there. So I should have said an opening rather than a window.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the door swings inward.
So the door would be open, there would be a shelf inside, so the cash box would be accessible.
Yeah, so kind of like when we were interested in the shed, what they did was they kept that door open and they had the cash box on a shelf. And what they would do is either the money's in their pocket or it's in the cash box. They walk back and forth.
With, I really like the design. I think it's very unique looking. Was there any consideration of incorporating like a solar power source on the roof?
So that's kind of up for improvements in the future. I know that Tim was talking about that there was a conduit kind of near the median. So if anything in that design process for us, we would leave something for them to potentially add on into the future. Whether it's solar, if it's a camera that they want to put in, or if they want to bring in electricity, if they want to do electronic sales. Rather than cash.
What does this cost?
Yeah, so right now we're at a budget.
Sorry.
Fifty eight, no, it's okay. So right now, we're at, our proposed budget right now is $5,800. Well, how much? $5,800.
Yeah.
For that kind of structure.
Have some funding already for that from N-Car, I believe.
Yeah.
An organization, part of like the AIA, so we already have what, 2,800?
Yeah, so they're kind enough to give us a grant to the National Office of $2,800.
Tom Council's contingency.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Well, that's interesting.
I mean, it kind of rose on you when we first saw it. I didn't really like it, but now I kind of like it, you know, as I look at it and which are the different like, you know, in its setting and things like that. I think it's kind of cool.
Yeah, I do too.
Picture is difficult to get a, and I, when you see it from the side, the top one. You see when I, the top right hand.
Yeah, it's a little flat.
Yeah. It's just a perception on it. I gotta tell you, for, and you've heard us all say, I think it's neat.
Yeah, thank you.
And it's, I, I'm going to tell you something else too. I hear all day long in different areas of life of how the current generation just doesn't want to. Yeah, you know where I'm going, right? I've got two kids, 17 years old, 13 years old. And what you, both of you are doing, and I'm assuming your team on this, to come to Tim, to come to the town and say, we would like to do something like this. I have never doubted that the current generation, the generation before, have a lot of good people that want to do things like this. So I commend you, and I say that for the public record, that there are so many people out there. But you are a perfect example of a hard-working effort that you want to do. So nice job. Seriously, nice job.
Mr. Chairman, with that being said, I think we should contribute $1,500 out of the town, the town council contingency to the, to the, to the cause.
I can get on board with that.
So we had a motion, a motion by Tony, seconded by Mary, to take $1,500 out of council contingency to help offset the costs. What what are we calling it?
Entry checkpoint? Yeah.
So we had a motion and a second, as stated, and and also to support the next steps on all of this. Any other discussion from the council? Any other?
Yeah, right.
Any other dialogue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Nice job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Since we have somebody, they hear, they loosen sleep. I know they miss their bedtime hour. I know that they're going to put a portfolio together, I'm sure, at some point in time for the school. I think they should take a pitch with all of us here. They should stand right in front of us and take a pitch with the council. I know Grandma is over there with a camera, so we're going to do it.
Come on, stand over here, guys. Just make sure I'm not being coward. I'm the shortest. Yes, yes.
We got space.
All right, you come over here. I'll stay here.
Nice job, gentlemen. It is. No, they like to sleep early. That's the only thing we can say negative of that. Go to bed too early. Absolutely. Thank you. Madam Kirk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the next item on the agenda, it's actually the citizens forum. And Elaine White was here, she signed in, but I don't know if she already left.
She left. It was beyond her bad time for beauty.
So then the next item on the agenda is J1. And this is what, this was for bid 1027, the souvenir merchandise for the 239 and 240th Fourth of July celebration. We had bid openings today at 12. Yeah, we did receive four bids. The first bid was from Graphic Inc. and that was in the amount of $78,065.85. The second one was from Sore Promotional Products in the amount of $7,966.83.
Did you forget any zeros there?
I did not, so I'm not sure. Somebody's going to have to review that.
The last one's interesting.
The third one was from Make, Survey, Craft and Print, and that was in the amount of $70,000. And the fourth one was from Concept Prints in the amount of $189,048.95.
I wonder if people read the same bid specs, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
When you see this wide range like this.
So we just need a motion?
A motion to refer to the town administrator and the Fourth of July Committee.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J2, and this is for bid 1028, the screw pump repair. This is the main lift pump station. This was a rebid. We did have the bids opening today at 12. See one.
It's a big difference.
From Heart Engineering Corporation in the amount of $679,000 for the completion of the screw pump repair. $20,000 in the physio alternates, the next two is $20,000, the renewed repair of the existing gearbox. And the second alternate was $50,000 for the bypass pump fuel for a total bid amount of $749,000.
Refer to the town administrator and choose, I guess, you know, to act in the best interest of the town. I believe heart engineering has been always the the folks that have been helping us out. Am I correct on that?
The most recent projects, yes, that's correct.
Right.
So we had a motion made, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, we did have smaller companies that were interested. They just did not get their bids in it on time. But we'll, we'll certainly review the process.
Well, as been stated multiple times, we had one bidder. Well, as been stated multiple times, we had one bidder, so we have the opportunity to negotiate.
Yes.
All right, so, perfect. Any other discussion? So we had a motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim to refer to the administrator and the director of water pollution. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is J three, and this is bid ten twenty-nine. This is the stage and sound for Bristol Fourth of July Concert Series twenty twenty-four. Again, we had the bid opening today at twelve. We received two bids, one was from NE Showtime Productions Inc. in the amount of eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the second was from Audio Solutions in the amount of fifty-six thousand, two hundred.
Make a motion to refer to the town administrator and the Fourth of July Committee. Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the last one is J four, this is bid ten thirty, this is the Bristol Fourth of July Ball twenty twenty-four rebid. We did have the bids today at twelve, we did receive four bids. The first bid was from Emery's Catering Service in the amount of forty-two thousand, lump sum cost of forty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents with a per plate cost of a hundred and fifty-three seventy-five. The second one was from Blackstone Caterers in the amount of forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five lump sum with a hundred fifty-seven seventy-three per plate cost. The third was from PNT Catering and Events, and that was in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-five lump sum cost and a hundred and thirty-nine per plate cost. We did also receive a bid from Common Pub and Grill. Unfortunately, the bid did not conform with the bid requirements and it had to be disqualified.
Those are some expensive plates, that's for sure.
I can make some pulled pork for you.
Aaron, we may take you up.
I'll make sure you some peppers.
Motion to refer to the town administrator and the Bristol Fourth of July Committee, Michelle Martins, to act in the best interest of the town.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, as stated, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is K one, and this is one more, I can never say his name right, I'm sorry, Mariscal? And he's from, is it Mariscal?
Mariscal, yes.
It's only been four years that I've been saying it the wrong way. And that's from the Bristol County Water Authority Board of Directors, this is the tri-town monthly report for December twenty twenty-three.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Tony, to receive and file, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Just need a motion to adjourn?
No, we need a G G one six.
We need a motion to move to G G one six?
That's what.
So moved.
Go ahead. Tim?
Yep, sorry, it's getting passed by that down. I just wanted to bring this to our attention and to the public's attention. I thought this was a really good report from the DEM in regards to the wetlands and the flooding issues that we've been having. I think recently we just had another quite a bit of rain and Hope Street was closed again. Diane, I just wanted to talk to you about specifically colleagues, page five eighty-nine. And it basically talks about the cost estimates that are recommended, actually it's five ninety-six, the cost estimates to kind of mitigate a lot of this flooding and start to attack some of the overgrown issues that we're having with vegetation that are kind of clogging a lot of these streams. So Diane, I was just wondering if we could briefly just understand what the priorities are on these.
Tim, when you say page five eighty-six, what page of the report is that?
Twenty-three of twenty-four.
Twenty-three, Diane, I'm going to pull it up for you.
You said five ninety-six.
Yeah, yeah, page five ninety-six specifically. It just kind of lists out the cost estimates of all the projects, Diane.
So you're looking at the Silver Creek Watershed Study?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've been doing a lot of work in Silver Creek Watershed as we can through the capital budget and with grants. So it's sort of been a phased approach to keep the, you know, to keep the budget manageable. But it is a priority watershed for the town. So we've been, every year we've been doing whatever we can, we did the stream cleanout at Lee La Jean, the east branch of Silver Creek, one of those homes we cleaned out. Of course, the golf course was a big project in that watershed. We're also now focusing on restoration of maintenance of drainage detention basins, Highview and Barnum in particular. We have Beta doing a design for us of some stormwater improvements in the Sherry and Barnum neighborhoods. We just applied for a grant to do comprehensive tree planting in that watershed as a climate resilience project.
Great.
So those have been sort of ongoing, of course, you purchased some open space to, you know, prevent development in that watershed. So there's been an ongoing phasing of all of these projects. And I think we're really trying to keep an eye on, as you say, the maintenance with the vegetation. And we also have a program through my department where we send out letters to everybody whose property abuts a wetland or a stream to remind them not to dump. Don't put your grass clippings or your leaves in those areas because they need to be kept open for stream runoff. So we're, we're doing a lot to address the issues in the water.
Good, so this isn't just a report, it is, we are to the public, we are putting it into action, we are taking, we, we are going, we are work, yeah. We're, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Diane.
Also, you can purchase the, the open space at Gooding Avenue in the Metacorp, which is where it is. And we have the Army Corps of Engineers also, we've got the Army Corps, we're looking at restoration of Silver Creek Bridge Terrace Schools.
We never stop, which is understandable.
That's it, that's good, we're on top of it.
So did I hear you said something about by Keteris Gold, Silver Creek there? Is that a, is there a consideration to dredge that area?
We, we were hoping, we walked the site with a team from Army Corps of Engineers and I, I don't, I don't think it'll get approved there, that they didn't sound optimistic that it would be approved, but more of a restoration with sea grasses and so forth. But to dredge nowadays, they're pretty much saying that's the natural aging of the creek. They suggest.
Natural aging of the creek, no, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't mean, not you, I'm just thinking, you know, yes.
Yeah, that's what happened, but they said, no, that's, that's a natural, it's a natural occurrence, it's spilling in with, you know. And so there, I don't think we're going to see it dredged. And that they do have jurisdiction handles, Army Corps of Engineers.
Right. Okay.
Any other discussion? Tim, thanks for bringing that forward, we have a motion to receive and file on it.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.